Two minutes? Two minutes? One minute? Stand by. Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one.
Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting this evening, Monday, April 25th. The meeting is being recorded for LCTV aired live, being livestreamed at longmeadow.org. This meeting has also been posted as required by open meeting law. We can begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The flag's looking a little lopsided.
The Long Meadow School Committee maintains educational policies that foster continuous improvement by challenging and supporting all children in a safe, caring, learning environment, enabling them to reach their highest potential and to become productive citizens. Through effective communication and positive relationships, the Long Meadow School Committee will make informed decisions in the best interest of the schools, the students, and the Long Meadow community. We do have a school presentation this evening. Are our students here, Mr. Landers?
Yeah.
Okay, so I will ask that you come on up with them. Tonight's presentation is from Long Meadow High School.
Good evening, I'm going to say some quick words to introduce three students who are going to talk about LHS clubs. And when I thought about what to present tonight, what to shine the light on regarding LHS, I chose clubs because we, our academics, our athletics, our music, our art gets a lot of exposure and that's all good and appropriate, but our clubs play a huge and vital role in the lives of our students. We have forty-nine active clubs right now at Long Meadow High School. If I gave this presentation a month ago, I would've said forty-seven, but just recently, two clubs have been added. And that's sort of the nature of the, of clubs at LHS. It's dynamic rather than static. And just to give you a flavor, we've just added a volleyball club, a co-ed volleyball club that's beginning right now at the high school, and also a medical club, which is in its very recent stages. So forty-nine active clubs. I want to acknowledge the work of Mr. Paul Dunkerly, one of the assistant principals at the high school, and the assistant principal who works most closely with our clubs and our club advisors. To give you an idea of the types of clubs that we have, we have academic clubs, service-oriented clubs, music clubs, athletic clubs, cultural clubs, service clubs, which we're going to hear a little bit from tonight, as well as social responsibility clubs. So forty-nine in all. They play a huge role in getting students involved in the high school. They play a huge role in having students experience something that they're interested in, that they're passionate about. They get to rub elbows with students who they might not normally rub elbows with. It helps to give them real-world experience. And our clubs do a lot for Long Meadow and the greater Western Mass region, and we're very proud of that. So I did want to say that of the forty-nine clubs, forty percent of the clubs advisors have no stipend. I certainly, we appreciate that they're volunteering. And for the sixty percent who receive a stipend, generally, it does not come close to the hours and the commitment that they give to the club. So we're very appreciative of our advisors. There are two clubs that I thought of to highlight to you tonight. And I have three students standing in back of me who are going to come on up here and speak to that. First of all, it's the Red Cross Club, which is in its second year. Mary Carter Bradshaw and Jill Corrigan, two twelfth graders, are going to come on up in a moment and chat about what the Red Cross Club is and give you a little bit of insight into what they've done over the last two years. I want to acknowledge Tracy Kelly and Tracy Bradshaw, who volunteer as advisors to that club. And after that, you'll hear from Maggie Rosemond, an eleventh grader, who's going to talk about Key Club, associated with the Kiwanis Club. And Key Club is our largest service club, and they just do an ungodly amount of work and volunteerism in providing all kinds of help and service to the community in greater Western Mass. So without further ado, I'm going to ask Mary Carter Bradshaw and Jill Corrigan, twelfth graders, to come on up and talk about the Red Cross Club. And after that, Maggie Rosemond will share some thoughts about the Key Club. Thanks so much.
Hi, my name is Jill Corrigan. I'm a senior at Long Meadow High School, and I'm the president of Red Cross Club.
Hi, everyone, I'm Mary Carter Bradshaw. I'm the secretary of the Red Cross Club, and I'm also a senior.
So we started Red Cross Club last year. My mom's been involved with the Red Cross for a while, and so I had some experience with it through her. And we talked to two of our other friends, and we started going to Red Cross events and learning more about the organization. And we just felt really connected to it and decided to start the club. So we have roughly twenty active members who've been part of the club both last year and this year, and some newcomers this year. The Red Cross has us complete a minimum of one educational event, one community service event, one fundraiser, and one blood drive per year.
So so far, within these past two years, we have completed two blood drives, and we're getting ready for our third in the end of May. And we have done, we have visited the Holyoke Soldiers Home and handed holiday cards for the past two years now. And then we've done a couple fundraisers. We've gotten the school involved with our Halloween fundraiser, and...
We've also done some community service events. We went to Loews and Fishes in Springfield. One of our educational events was going, having a Long Meadow Days booth, where we handed out flyers and information. And we also use that as an opportunity, opportunity to raise awareness just about the Red Cross in general, and what it does, what it's about, and also promoting blood services especially, because that's a huge part of the organization.
So basically, we're just really excited to get people involved with the Red Cross and learn more about the organization and all the benefits it can have for natural disasters, military services, just lots of different branches of the Red Cross. So we're really excited to hand it off to the juniors that will be the new leaders of the club next year. And we hope that it grows more and people are more involved with community service, because we feel that that's extremely important for our school and community to have. And we're just very excited to get people involved with the Red Cross organization in general. So, yeah. Thank you very much for letting us speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello. My name's Maggie Rosemond, and I'm currently a junior here. I was just elected president of the Long Meadow High School Key Club, and this is my third year being on the board. Key Club meets every Monday night from seven to eight. On the board, we meet at six, and we meet on Sunday nights for the board. We have a total of nearly two hundred members this year in Key Club, and we participated in about sixty projects throughout the community. Some of our bigger projects were the Unico banquet, the Leaf Gala, and we have our own booth at Long Meadow Days, which is coming up. And those are the projects that help us like connect the club to the Long Meadow community better. And we also conduct projects in the school, like within the LHS community. Some of these projects include, we help out with the football concessions. We did a project where we like wrote inspirational notes all over the school, so that was one of my favorite projects. And just tonight, at our meeting, we're going to be organizing stuff for Teacher Appreciation Week. We're doing a raffle. So every morning, they're going to call out a raffle ticket. Each teacher gets one, and they get a gift card if they win the raffle. So over the next year, we have a few new goals, such as forming a stronger bond with international key clubs and creating more projects to benefit our own key club and local community. We're already planning a new project to help with that. We're having a Halloween trick-or-treat here at LHS. So kids are going to come and trick-or-treat on the doors. We've already made, a lot of our meetings have been making Halloween decorations, even though it's May, or April. And so we like do a lot of that stuff. And that's really like, we want to get a lot more student involvement too. So we're trying to get some more members, even though we already have two hundred, so we're the biggest club at LHS, but we would always love to have more members. And so for that Halloween project, we're going to be, try to partner with other classes. We're partnering with the sport and event class, which is a class that you can take at Long Meadow High School, and the National Honor Society. So we are really excited for this project and hope it will be a huge success. And we really want to create some more projects that are going to continue from year to year. So yes, I thank you all for your time.
And thank you. The Key Club over my six years here has always been willing to step in. We ask a lot of you, so thank you for all the progress.
You have the credit for spending so much time with Mr. DeBurn.
Absolutely. Mr. DeBurn, if I didn't mention him, he's the advisor to the Key Club and does amazing work for us. I just wanted to thank Mary and Jill and Maggie for chatting. And lastly, I wanted to mention another new club of ours, the World Quest Club. It's an academic club, and it is trivia-based, and they won the local contest here in Western Mass, and they just traveled over the vacation down to Washington DC to compete nationally. So, and that was almost fully funded by the local branch of the World Affairs Council. So another example of a new club, a dynamic club, and one that started because students had interest. I'll finish by saying something that we say to students often. All you need to start a new club at LHS is a good idea. At least twenty students who are truly interested in the, in the subject, and a responsible adult who will be willing to volunteer as an advisor. And we're very proud of the forty-nine clubs that we have, and they're various, and we think they do really good work.
It's an amazing amount of offerings. Our students are very lucky to have such adults so involved and caring that offer them, and students that are so willing to participate.
And staff that's, you know, so willing to kind of give up their free time to do it.
Absolutely.
Michelle.
Can you figure out what clubs you offer on the website? Are they listed?
They are listed, yeah, they're listed on our website. They're, most of, it's updated. It's a, it's a rolling list. But also, one of the things that we do for incoming ninth graders on the ninth grade orientation is that we, as they come in, we put out all the clubs, and we have signup sheets, and we tell them, even if you're not, you're not necessarily committing to it, but if you have any interest, sign up. It's a good way for them to know what's offered, and a good way for them to get to know people. So, and we continuously advertise the various clubs. And like I said, it's indicative of all the work that goes on at LHS and all the involvement of the students. Thanks for having me.
Correspondence for this evening?
We have an emailed letter from Ms. Sherry Ehrenberg dated April 11th regarding the BYOD program at Williams Middle School. We have an emailed letter from Ms. Joanne Valera dated April 11th regarding the BYOD program at Williams Middle School. An emailed letter from Ms. Stephanie Jasmine dated April 11th regarding the BYOD program at Williams Middle School. I know we got another one today about the same thing, but it'll go into the next meeting's, next meeting. Yeah.
Any visitor comments this evening? All right. Any school committee comments this evening?
I got two.
Okay.
One, I just want to give the community a very quick reminder, school community, a very quick reminder that the 2016-17 and 2018, 17-18 calendars are available on our website, the Long Meadow Public Schools district page. I've gotten several sort of questions from parents the last couple weeks about calendars. We've been doing them on a two-year rolling basis, so they are available. And the other thing I just want to say, it's more of a comment than an announcement, but you know, there's been a lot in the news recently about some of the discrimination taking place in North Carolina regarding transgender equality. There's been a lot in the news about Massachusetts and the way that in which the Senate and the House are trying to vote on legislation. But I think that this board can actually feel good about some of the work that we've done, because just a few months ago, we quietly passed policies that incorporate terminology, gender identity, into our existing hiring policies, into our student procedures. And so I just kind of want to let, you know, the community know and this board know that, you know, we've actually been pretty progressive on the topic of transgender equality. And I think it's an important statement for this board to make to continue to highlight the fact that Long Meadow Public Schools are, you know, accepting of every person, and we don't discriminate against anybody based on their religion, their race, their national origin, their gender identity. It doesn't matter. And so I'm proud of this board for what we've done. We didn't do it with any fanfare. It wasn't a big announcement. And I know that many school districts across Massachusetts have done the same thing. And so I just want to kind of highlight that for the community in case nobody knows that we've, we've been a little bit out ahead on that, which is good.
Liz?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I think that we need to have more idle, anti-idling signs around the schools, especially at this school. Today, I was out there, and a lot of parents picking up their kids, and also a police officer was sitting in his car for over ten minutes, just idling. And I, you know, tried to make a gesture to show them to, you know, can you turn your car off? And he ignored me. So I want to remind everybody that idling wastes 3.8 millions of gallons of fuel every day, and it's linked to asthma and allergies and heart disease. And it is, it's against the law in Massachusetts that you idle for more than five minutes, and it's punishable by a fine from a hundred dollars up to $25,000. So please turn off your cars. Open your windows.
Especially when they're in the car line for twenty minutes.
Right, car line terrible. And I'm going to email the DPW tomorrow, and hopefully they can put some signs out here.
She put notes on people's cars.
Liz, if you send me those statistics, I'm happy to send that out to the parents as a gentle reminder.
Okay, thank you.
It'd be a nice way to tell them the reason we asked them to shut off their cars.
With the bring-your-own-device issue, I saw the letters that came in. I think in a future meeting, it might be good to have an agenda item where we just talk about what's going on with that and what our response was.
A meeting with the, I pretty informed you at the last meeting. I had called one of the parents to discuss what the issues were. Who was at the meeting, and one of the leaders of bringing forward the concerns. And I'm going to the PAC meeting to meet with the parents, but that's not until, I don't know, May. So have more information.
So we have a follow-up meeting going, coming up with administration? Okay.
That was reported last time, right?
Yes, the last meeting I did, I'll report to you on that.
Well, I didn't know what we were doing next is really the issue, so.
Did you have anything?
Well, I was going to remind people about the town meeting, that they should try and attend May 10th, possibly May 11th as well. I don't quite underst, I haven't read all that, but it could be a two-day town meeting. So I just want to remind everyone to please attend. Our budget will be, one of the items on the warrant, but there are quite a few different articles that are important for the town to be able to vote on.
And I'll just follow up on Kim's really quickly, just to explain the two-night thing, if I can.
Sure.
Please.
There are a number of citizen petitions, some of which have the potential to be highly controversial, including three related to gun control, which have certainly...
There are how many warrants altogether?
Thirty-three?
Three, thirty-four, something like that. So it's a...
The long warrant.
It's a long list of warrant articles.
The moderator, in her wisdom, has decided that because it has the potential to become a highly controversial meeting, that she will at 10:30, if the agenda is not moving along as quickly as she would like, entertain a motion to adjourn until the next night and resume town meeting the next night at seven o'clock to finish that business. I think she's trying to be mindful of people's patience because of the importance of many issues. So that's, that's the gist of it.
Is that information on the town website? Does anyone know?
I know that she has put it, the moderator put it on her, on the town moderator's Facebook page. I don't know if that information's available on the website yet, but I spoke with Kathy Ingram in the clerk's office today. And I think they're still trying to get a little organized around the potential of it. I know that there's a need by the town clerk's office to hire staff for the next night, which is something they weren't preparing for, police, overtime, things like that. So I think they're still trying to get organized around it.
Gotcha.
That would still require a vote by town meeting?
Yeah.
Yes, that would.
It would.
At 10:30 at night?
But I do know... And hopefully, we'll have more information. We, our next meeting is the night before town meeting. So we can certainly share that information as, as we get more.
Did we work on the possibility of having babysitters?
Diane emailed Jamie DeBurn. I don't, have you heard back?
No, I emailed Tom Landers. I didn't have a lot of details. They were asking about where and how many people, and I don't know any of that. So I was hoping that they would try to organize it and get back to us. So we'll touch base again tomorrow.
Okay. Yeah, I was going to see, like, where we could have, I don't know if there's a room we can put, set up and maybe put, I don't know, Disney video on or something, and some Key Club kids in it, and hope that parents come with their kids.
Kim, you had asked me to contact Steven Crane about the survey, and he thinks it's a great idea to send it out through our link. So he's going to send me that information, and we'll send it out to the school community and see if we can get them to respond.
Thank you.
So in light of us having several visitors for presentations, I am going to reorganize the agenda so that they can do their presentations and beyond, because I know they've all had long days. So I'd like to first start with the school building committee's final report. Mr. Bobby Barquette and Mr. Peter Greenberg are both here to share with us their final report, even though we disbanded their committee and voted for that several meetings ago, which I know they're very saddened about, but they are here to give us the final information.
Medicals. We'll bring you back. I know, I know Greenberg board.
Do you choose the forward and backward arrows? Or do you want me to do it for you?
Oh, it doesn't matter.
Okay.
You can have it. It's all yours. You were kidding about the most... We only have five minutes. So maybe that's, maybe that's a good question to ask. How much time do we have right now? Not to delay your agenda for the evening insensitive to that. Well, if this is thirteen years, you want me to compress it into five minutes? Get your running ears on. Okay. First of all, I want to thank the school committee for having us in. It is true what Superintendent Doyle said. Officially, the school building committee is no more. We've dissolved the committee. The town has received its final payment. And in the town of Long Meadow, under our bylaws... And in the town of Long Meadow, under our bylaws, a building, school building committee is only assigned to its specific project. In this case, it was just the high school. And once that project was complete, then it was to be dissolved per the bylaws. So, that said, obviously, Long Meadow is blessed with an excellent school system within an outstanding town. And we believe now that this facility complements our outstanding faculty and students. Just to go backwards a little bit, we see, we started here in 2003 with this specific project. But let's remember what got us there. Our accreditation was at risk. And for several reasons, at that time, ADA compliance was a big, very, very big issue. Somebody in a wheelchair, we had one working elevator. It was at a remote portion of the, of the school. Many students would have had to go outside and to come into a different level of the school to get from one point to another. We had a very poor and inefficient HVAC system. The boiler systems were failing. It was very difficult to assess and to fix at any given time. The safety and security of the building was an issue. The main office was three sets of double doors off the front. Though we had a video system, that's truly not the best way to do that. There was always a faculty member who sat inside the door, as they do now, but at least you're within sight and you're in one set of double doors. You have to be buzzed in here. It's a little bit different, the system that we have now. The building was also suffered from a lot of seismic shift and there was a lot of stepping off of the walls. If you recall, many of you went on tours when we initially had them. The northwest wall in particular was sandwiched with four steel beams that kept it together from moving off any further off the foundation. And as we did demo, we saw really how bad that, that damage was when we got there. So, let's bring us to our timeline here. In 2003, the Facility Improvement Committee was formed, but the school committee itself secured a facility study with Castle Blue's Associates out of Connecticut. And in 2004, they commenced that study. The school committee in 2005, the spring of 2005, was presented with several options as a result of that, of that facility study and chose at that time to kind of put on the brakes and assess some things, breathe a little bit. And directly following that decision, the Massachusetts School Building Authority went into moratorium and didn't fund any schools for a couple of years. They moved the Massachusetts School Building Authority from the Treasury Department, I'm sorry, from the Department of Education into the Treasury for the state. So, it's all under the treasurer of the state of Massachusetts now. So, that changed a whole lot of things. And in 2007, we submitted a statement of interest for Long Meadow High School, Williams Middle School, and Glenbrook Middle School. All of the communities within the Commonwealth of Massachusetts were asked at that time, if you wanted to submit a statement of interest for your schools, do it. There were over 400 submissions. Of course, it created quite a bottleneck at the, at the Boston level. So, anybody in any community that had submitted multiples, multiples statements of interest were asked to submit just one. And of course, with our accreditation at risk, we selected Long Meadow High School, even though many of us believed that Williams Middle School was probably in, in worse shape than the high school at the time. But I think we made the right decision to move forward, the accreditation, though we had spent at that time roughly $8 million over the course of 10 years. At that point, we were still at risk for losing our accreditation through NEASC. So, we moved right along. We moved right along, right? That's okay. So, we did that, MSBA approved our, moved right along. There's that time crunch. And here we are in our new school. Hope you enjoy it. So, anyways, the MSBA accepted our SOI in 2008. 2008, we selected our OPM, Jocelyn Lesser and Associates, and our architect Omar, the officer Michael Rosenfeld and Associates. And we commenced with our feasibility study, the facility study that we started with was a $50,000 facility study. In the new Massachusetts guidelines through the MSBA, the facility, feasibility study is a much more robust required study that really gets down to the nitty-gritty of what's going on with your building. Not only do they do a physical assessment of all systems, the building envelope and the site, they look at the flow within that, what, what your growth is, what your enrollment is, what your delivery of education is, how you do that, how your departments are set up, the whole nine yards. It's, it's quite an intensive piece. And through that time also, we had commissioned a, some work with Frank Locker, who brought 40 members of both the school community and the community at large together to really find out what Long Meadow wanted in a building. Okay? And the results of all of that moved forward and, and recommended a new building at that point in time. And the differential between a full renovation and a new building was, was about a difference of about $15 million, but you're talking the difference, the lifespan of a renovated, fully renovated building has been running between 20 and 25 years. And we are looking at a 50-year build with a new building. So, the differential, we thought we'd get a return on that. In 2010, as many are aware, we had a special town meeting vote approval at just about 91% approval. And we filled the existing gym, the auditorium, the cafeteria, and what is this space now, which used to be the BTC, I suppose, Business Tech Center, filled all four of those spaces for that vote. And then, just following that, the town ballot vote came in and approval roughly of 57%. Now, we can move along.
I'm afraid so.
No, that's okay. That's okay. So, then you develop your project scope and budget agreement. We selected Gilbane, our construction management company, put everything out to bid and bids were accepted. We had groundbreaking in 2011 on a very nice hot day and that was, that was fun. And in 2013, we completed phase one, finally. And just following February vacation, everybody moved in. Yeoman's work to faculty and staff for, for helping to literally move boxes and equipment and all kinds of things. And they spent a lot of time, many of the student organizations, clubs and organizations, I was thinking about that, how they interacted with the project, they were instrumental in moving a lot of that equipment. They had a lot of fun destroying the old school too and they got the right all over the place. But that was, that was a lot of fun. So, everybody moved in then. And then, at the tail end of 2013, the summer of 2013, we moved into, phase two was pretty much completed. And that was the renovated portion of the building, which is what we're sitting in now, where this, where this is. Our room is here. So, the site work substantially completed through the rest of 2013. I believe that spilled into 2014. Commissioning was an ongoing process through 2014, 15, as systems came on board, security systems, their HVAC systems, you name it. There are some glitchy things that, that occurred and I think everybody was subject to those situations, but finally, I think we've ironed those out. Let me move along here. Gilbane, their final contract completion was complete in 2015. 2015, our mass CHIPS, which is all the energy points, that final audit and report was submitted and we were finally certified and we hit nearly everything we, we shot for with the energy points, which also translates to dollars. You're talking 2% back from the state when you, when you complete your, in its completion, the mass CHIPS audit. The MSBA, at the, at the end of 2015, received their, the final audit and completed that. And the board of the Massachusetts Building Authority, which meets every two months, finally accepted our project in its entirety. We received final payment two weeks after that vote was completed and we dissolved our school building committee. If you go to the next slide there for a second. And that's a span of roughly 13 years, from the beginning of Tom McGary and his group saying, I think we really need to study this building, to dissolution of a school building committee and a final product. So, it's, it's a marathon. And I know that you guys have, have been interested in middle school projects and I, I've spoken with many of you, that it, it takes a long time and you've really got to get your marathon shoes on and be ready for a very long process and, and have patience, perseverance. So, let's go to the next slide here real quick. And, you know, as a school building committee, you are assigned by, by the town and you, and you have a town role, you can't pass a project legally and raise money. You need a political action committee. And these nice ladies right here, Beth Barron, Kim Burns, Niece Collins, Sherry Ehrenberg, and so many more formed Lancer Pride, and they did a phenomenal job in getting the vote out and educating people as to why we really needed to go with a new building. There was a lot of controversy in town. Everybody remembers this. It was not an easy decision. It was not an easy decision for everybody on our committee. Is this really the way we want to go? Do we want to go new? Can we renovate? Can't we just kind of patch it off for a little bit longer? Can we do those things? But when you have, when you ground that vote and we've just spent $8 million over the last 10 years and we're still on warning for NEASC, and we remained on warning throughout the project because they wanted to make sure this thing came to fruition, you know, it's, it speaks volumes. So, these ladies here, incredible work and we can't thank them enough. And their names are not on the plaque out there and it is what it is, but they did phenomenal work. They really did. If we move on to the next one. And this is our school building committee at the time we closed up. Marie, Stephen Crane, Tom Landers, Paul Dunkley, Paul Pasterzak, Mike Rabel, John Fitzgerald, Mark Gold, Rich Bistran, Roland Joyle, and Ron Hirsch. The committee, the school building committee, the, the membership is, is pretty much outlined by the Massachusetts School Building Authority. They give you an outline of who they would like to see on there. They want to see representative from your town council, city council, or select board. They want to see a couple of representatives from the school committee. They want to see that the schools are involved and they want to see that the, the town is involved. So, your process now, as you know, the school committee can submit a statement of interest, but you need approval from your, from your town council, your select board, your town manager, town administrator, so that both sides of the street are on the same page. And so, that they reflect that in their guidelines on who's the membership of your committee. The last three members there, Rich Bistran, Roland Joyle, and Ron Hirsch are members at large from the community. And, and it was asked that those folks have some type of experience. Rich is an engineer, Roland is a principal of a school, and Ron Hirsch is a retired teacher. So, all of them brought to the table, great experience. And we can't honestly thank them enough. There's so many meetings that, that occurred and phone calls and reviews and such. We can move on from, from our group there. And the former school building committee members, of course, Jan Hart, who was responsible for picking up the ball from where Tom and Scott Anderson had picked up and dropped off right into her lap. And she wrote beautiful statements of interest, did great work. And of course, Christine Swanson, who was the co-chair of the committee before she moved down south, she did phenomenal work and we were actually able to have her come recently while she was visiting schools with her daughter. And she took a tour of the high school and she was very impressed. She hadn't seen it since it was just steel. And so, she really was, was excited to see how the, the building came and was being used as we had, as we had designed it. Larry Birdy, former principal here, Mark Searlne, some guy from town here who's an architect. Gwen Brunz, Robin Crosby, Danielle Judge, Lori, and Jen. Next one, and former board and committee members who were involved, and I think you know many of those names, Rob Azeltine, Armin Ray, Jeff Wagen, Michael Clark, Liz Bone, Catherine Gerard, Kim King, Janet Robinson, Owen Humphries, Jarar Kieranin, Mary Vogel, Tracy DiMarco, Tom Burnett, Jim DeRosier, Marie Angelides, Rich Foster, Alex Grant, Paul Santinello, William Chabelli, and Mark Borowski. Now, think about how many of those folks are still on committees when you go through all of those things. And when I say you need marathon shoes, you need them. Because you really have a good communications plan that has to be in place because you are going to pass along information and carry forward that vision. And that's, that's difficult because not everybody here, how many folks here were involved in the building project. And you're all responsible for the building now. So, same thing's going to happen as you move on to your next building project or any project that you do and anything that you vote on. We can move, move forward. Okay? And special thanks to our contractors. Jocelyn Lesser, in particular, Tom Murphy did a phenomenal job for us. He was our point person with Jocelyn Lesser. They're the project manager, management company that represents us. They're owners, project managers required by the MSBA that an OPM is hired. You can no longer have an individual community have their little clerk of the works. That doesn't work anymore if they're going to be involved in the project. With them, we hired and interviewed Omar as well as other architects and we selected Omar. So, Tom Murphy, Jeff Luxenberg, Stu Lesser, and the folks at Jocelyn Lesser. And then, we worked with, directly with Michael Rosenfeld right at the beginning, who's the principal owner of Omar Architects, Chuck Kaler, Gene Roberts, and Eric Johnson, who did a great job. And of course, Gilbane and, and Ryan Hutchins and Tony Icarino and Bill Carney are all the, the great folks. And we were lucky enough, Ryan Hutchins is a graduate of Long Meadow High School, so he was very happy to be awarded the project. And they did a phenomenal job. They work with the faculty, they, they listen to administration. I think they worked directly with Marie's office so many occasions to make sure things right. Tony especially, yeah. Yeah. Tony's changed his phone number now, so. But they, they did wonderful work. And the, the community, I really have to, and this doesn't happen very often, I, I understand, but, you know, there's a lot of folks in the community and there's a lot of unsung heroes and a lot of people that make this building come together. It wasn't just our OPM, our architect, and the construction company. In particular, the Long Meadow DPW did a, an extraordinary job. There's not enough expletives to honestly, to scream from the mountaintop of how well they came together for us and filled in the gaps on so many, so many times. They really did a great job and they were very patient. And they were, they were taking over systems that were brand new and completely foreign to them. They had to be trained 100% on stuff they had never even seen before. So, there was a comfort level with the older systems and they knew them very well. But they have stepped up and they have really done a wonderful job in, in maintaining this building now. Also, we have our public safety crews, our fire department and their inspectors and the police department that worked very carefully with the architectural firm and then worked with Gilbane to make sure that all the systems were running correctly. And they ran around and, you know, took care of, of many of the, the things. LCTV, I want to speak to them in particular. Hi, guys back there. I know you're listening. We gave them a new home here. I think it was important to the town, as we heard very early on, that it was important to have LCTV be a part of this footprint. How can we make sure that that happens? Where were we going to put them before? All the fibers came into here, so we were committed to doing that. We wanted to make sure they had a new space. So, we brought everything together. They funded up, obviously from the inside out, we funded from the outside in and gave them new walls and, and such. And I hope they're happy and I understand that they're happy with, with their new home here. And it works out very nicely with the BTC and how they're immersed here. And of course, we've reduced the number of cables in the rooms and we have a nice community room here that they can film from. We, we hope that the, the community is happy with that decision, of course. But of course, our, our faculty and staff, again, you know, when you see something in two dimension and you're looking at sets of plans and you wonder if this is going to be good and I want to see what my classroom's going to look like and I want to see what in particular, science labs are going to look like. It is difficult to take 2D and imagine it in 3D, no matter who you are. And they did a wonderful job in, in coming in, reviewing documents and getting together with the, with the contractors and tweaking things along the line. So, they were, they were awesome. Our staff has always been tremendous and very, very patient. They have to run a school building. They still have to deliver education. At the end of the day, that's what we do here. They're not supposed to be, you know, making sure that the building works correctly, but they do. They're that dedicated. The residents of the town of Long Meadow supported this project. And the neighbors who are within direct vicinity of this had to put up with bells and whistles and dust and all kinds of things. So, we want to make sure that we say thank you to them for their patience with this. But the, the town supported this and in, and many occasions, even supporters were concerned about a new build or even investing in a new building if we weren't going to maintain it. You know, they, they were very concerned that the old building had run down, was purposely run down so that we would get a new building. We heard this on many, many occasions at many forums. And, and all we could say was, listen, we're going to invest in this. And part of the program, the acceptance with the MSBA, is that you have to, you have to develop a maintenance program and submit it to them before they can even accept the project. So, we have it in writing and, and we move forward with that. And, and I implore everybody in town, we asked the select board of this as well, please maintain the building. It is, it is substantial. The building has systems that nobody's seen before. It costs a lot of money to take care of it. The building is more efficient than, than anything we've ever had in town and it's going to be for quite a while. But it takes maintenance, it takes a program, and it's going to take both school committee and select board together to maintain this. You know, I think we spoke with your subcommittee that was, that was interested in a middle school project potentially. And one of the things that we expressed to them was maybe that the school committee lead the town in developing a, a town-wide facility committee. The school committee oversees the bulk of the square footage here in town. And so, it would be nice for you to lead it, but they need to be on board as well. And so, it would be nice for you to lead it, but they need to be on board as well. With the town charter the way it is, DPW is responsible for maintenance, the janitorial staff falls under the principles. But at the same time, they are responsible, both sides of the fence, so to speak, are responsible for these buildings. And both would be negligent if they fell into disrepair, especially purposely in disrepair, which I don't believe and I've never seen any evidence of that. But to work together. I think there's space for that. It's been presented several times over. Myself and other people have wanted to see that come to fruition. I think there's been some resistance in the past, but now that we're investing in buildings, we have Center School that's post now nearly 20 years under renovation, Blueberry Hill and Wool Swamp Schools. But the high school now, I know we're staring at potential DPW building and I know that the seniors would love to have either a renovated space or even a new space. That's a lot of investment in square footage and I think it's a good reason for everybody to get together and get on the same page and how we're going to invest in those things and how we're going to oversee them. But we really hope that somebody takes the lead on that. Somebody other than Peter and I. But also, thank you to Congressman Richard Neal, who was instrumental in helping us out with the state. And State Representative Ryan Ash, former state Senator Gail Candares, and former state representative Mary Roganis all helped us out quite a bit. And now, you can see how our high school is being used in marketing materials for contractors. They're very proud of this project and being highlighted. This is a trade magazine, as a matter of fact, it's last month's trade magazine. It's called High Point, but it's, in particular, United Steel used the picture of our auditorium here and the fly and the steel just itself in one of their ads. And they're very proud of it. And I understand, and Marie, I know that you've announced that the MSBA is considering now Long Meadow High School as one of the model schools for other communities to come and take a look at and to use this design in particular. And that is really a testimony to the entire community. And they should be visiting shortly, right?
May 5th?
May.
Yeah.
Right. What's that? Yeah, I think they're coming, two weeks?
Yeah, I think it's May 5th.
Two weeks? Or next week? Next week, okay. So, this is kind of like the nitty gritty into some percentages here. The bottom line with this slide is to show you that we fell well under par when it came to change orders. We pretty much stuck to the plan. We had an outstanding set of documents, both in the specs for the project and the drawings, which led down the road to very little change once the project was commenced. If you look at in particular, under the differing conditions unforeseen, right there, you see the average across the state is 1.41%. We were up. And the reason we were up for that is because of the asbestos and the work that we discovered we had to do in the auditorium. The asbestos removal went over budget roughly $750,000. There was that much in the building that we didn't know. And when I tell you we did a $750,000 feasibility study just to crawl around this building to try to discover how much was really there and how much we'd be running into, no matter whether we renovated or we were going to build a brand new school, you have to remediate it. In this space in particular, there was a large beam that was completely coated in mastic. And now, and of course, that was the norm for building back then, but now it's not acceptable. And so, you have to abate that. So, about $750,000. There were pipes in the ground, transite piping that was not on any plans whatsoever that we discovered. And within the walls of the building, within the floors of the building, tiles, we knew that some of the tiles were there, but 750 grand is a lot of money. The auditorium was about $250,000 over. There was another commitment, like LCTV, people wanted to make sure we kept the auditorium, the pool. Okay? The state will not fund pools. So, if you wanted to keep it, they said, you're on your own and everything from, basically from the pool this way through the renovated portion of the building was 100% on the dime of Long Meadow. The state did not engage in that whatsoever. So, we made a commitment to renovate the auditorium and do the tile over and do the horrific locker rooms that we had over again. We stripped those things right down to dirt, took out all the piping. There wasn't anything left but just walls, which was kind of exciting to see because we knew how bad they really were.
That was actually an upgrade.
That was an upgrade. But there was, there were moments when we thought we were going to go $2 million over budget with the auditorium. There was, there was a time when we thought the steel was suspect, the structure. And it turned out that it was just some surface rust and we were very lucky. The surge tank also could have been something very messy. But as we discovered, the deck drain lines were not working properly and a lot of it was not up to snuff. So, we renovated a good portion of that, changed how it's heated in there, upgraded the HVAC system, superheat the air, and you save money on how you heat the pool area. So, those things were really good. But that's, in those lines right there, that's where the rubber met the road. The next is, yeah, that's the last one. Line items. I think when you look at the total project budget, that's what you want to focus on? We had a total project budget of about 78 and a half million dollars and we came in at just about 76 million dollars. So, yes, the Long Meadow High School project came in under budget roughly at the end of the day, 1.7 million dollars under budget. We were over, we needed to fund 250, about $250,000 over what was bonded at the time. We bonded the project very early before groundbreaking. And roughly four months later, we got the PFA amendment from the MSBA. Basically, they looked at all of our bids and they said, okay, where do you stand with all the dollars against each area and every single line item? And they said, well, we're not going to engage in those things over there and not engage that. And that swung it back in our direction and we had a deficit starting in September, four months after groundbreaking, of about $900,000. So, instead of going back to the town and securing another million dollars, we said, let's try to live within our means and do what we can within the contingencies. And despite the $750,000 in asbestos and despite the $900,000 and despite the $250,000 in auditorium, we still delivered this building at 1.7 million dollars under budget. Now, that is testimony to the faculty and to the staff and to the contractors and the architects and the project management team and the school building committee staying on task. And that's what it was. There wasn't a day that went by that Peter Greenberg and I didn't speak. There wasn't a day that went by, weekends or whatever, that we didn't speak with our OPM, Tom Murphy, or talk with Tony Icarino. Peter toured the site every single day and I was there several times during the week, but we were on the phone every single day, several times a day. And there's literally items and decisions that have to be made on a daily basis. Small things and then, of course, your building committee's got to vote on large things. Okay? But there's a decision, do I go left or right on this? Do I go up or down on that? You know, we're stuck over here, how do we move this? If we re-phase it this way, we're not going to be able to go through that door frame that way and we're going to have to move all that. Can we salvage some of this stuff? What do you guys want to do with this? And it's constant. It's all day long for years. Literally, you saw 13 years. It wasn't daily for 13 years, but the intensity of the project, once it starts and groundbreaking starts, it's every single day, all day long. So, it's a lot of work. None of these folks get paid for this and it's, and you do it because you have passion for the town of Long Meadow, as Peter and I do. We both grew up here, we love the town, and we wanted to see it move forward with an outstanding facility that, again, reflects what we produce here, which is outstanding students with great faculty and staff. Was that fast enough?
Yep.
13 years? 13 years.
Could I just add one name? I don't believe you mentioned it. Joe Aberdell.
Yes.
Very important role in that, he went around and documented with photographs the actual damage, structural damage of the old building. And for, you know, a picture's worth a thousand words and he really gave a lot of time and service to the project and I just thought I'd add that.
Joe was.
He did quite well.
Outstanding.
Thank you. Excellent report.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I just want to jump in and thank both of you because this would not have happened if you didn't spend every single minute of every single day for the last at least six years, walking around the premises, you know, having very contentious meetings with very contentious arguments and really driving the community to a point where, like you said, we had 91% of the vote at town meeting. And I remember that like it was yesterday. I think like Liz and John and I, you know, we were very fortunate to be part of this project, you know, really once the ground was broken. But certainly for some of us, like John, you know, years before ground was broken along with you and with Peter, you know, it's very easy today to drive by this property and think, wow, we've got a beautiful school. Because we do. But, you know, I was a student in the old school and I came here every single day for four years and then I kept coming back as a member of the school committee. So, it's very easy to forget what the building was like. And, you know, one of the most poignant things that was said about the building was when Deb Callahan was speaking at the ribbon cutting. And she said that the quality of life for teachers in this building was, you know, it was terrible. It was terrible to go to school every day and work in a building that was falling apart. And I don't think I ever thought about that when I was in school. And I don't think I ever thought about that when, you know, we were trying to get the vote out and when, you know, and when we did. But when you think about all of the different people who had to come to work in this building, had to come learn in this building, and you look at the quality of people that we've turned out, it's a real testament to the staff, you know, and to the resiliency of the people who went to school here. But the fact that we get to sit here in this beautiful room and there's actually air conditioning and that, you know, Sam gets to go to school here and, you know, that so many kids, your kids included, I think yours missed the vote on that, but.
It happens.
It happens. But they get to come to school here.
grandchildren.
In this building. I mean, we owe a huge debt of gratitude to the both of you for all the time that you gave up and all those hours and nights away from your families. And like you said, we also owe a huge debt of gratitude to the community. You know, 78 million, really 44 million dollars bonding is not a small chunk of change to pull down in one night, but we did. And I think that that speaks volumes to the commitment the community has for our schools. And so, you know, now that we've come in under budget, which was sort of the big talking point at the beginning, I remember when a better Long Meadow was saying, it can never happen. And they had crazy meetings in the library and Gerald Dukehead got thrown out. All those fun things that went along with getting this done, I think we can turn around and we can say that we did a job well done. And the names of those people on that plaque up there, you know, just tell a little portion of the story about what went into this. And it's really the generations of people who, and members of this board, who have, you know, contributed their time to get this project going, yourself included, Bobby. And so, to be able to sit here today, I'm going to wrap this up now, to be able to sit here today, it's really special. And I think, you know, hopefully, parents, members of the community remember, you know, what went on, what it took to get here. And they remember the sacrifice that people like you made to make this a possibility.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I can't thank the two of you enough on behalf of the community. I think I was privy to all the calls, not all of them, but calling you and myself, can you come over? And pulling you out of work time and time again, day after day. And because you did that, the project stayed on task and stayed under cost. You led that school building committee, which was a tremendous group of people, great minds in the room, that we didn't do change orders, we were thoughtful about how we did it. I don't think the town understands, we could have been $2 million over easily if the two of you didn't keep us on track. Bobby, you saw the 13 years and you were there every single minute. Peter, you walked in at a crucial time. Construction was going on, the hard hats were out, but it was that day by day, you were there every single day, walking through, checking, looking, was the project being done the right way. And I think that there were so many people that tell you, the superintendents will say that in the building phase, so much can go wrong unless people are really keeping their eye on it. You can trust the OPMs, you can trust the building manager, but you had to make decisions all the time. And we called you all the time to come over. Please come over, please come over, please come over. And the two of you never lost your cool. Every single day you came over here.
Did you miss the calls?
We can't thank you enough. Because of this high school, it's a tribute to the two of you as well as the building committee, the entire community. But what the two of you did for the town of Long Meadow, we are forever grateful.
Thank you.
So, what are you going to do with all your free time now?
Well, we almost killed.
Yeah, you almost killed me, that's why. Yeah, you almost killed me.
Literally in the hospital.
Yeah, literally in the hospital and taking phone calls, by the way.
Exactly. It's like, we can't.
I'm going to try to build a BPW.
And you've changed your cell phone numbers like Tony has.
No, thank you. Thank you both. We can't say enough.
A pleasure. It was our pleasure, so.
Just take care of it.
I think we did, I did miss the, I did miss the, you know, sort of contractors as well, because I remember very clearly a week before the building opened and the students were supposed to come back in February vacation, walking through with Marie and maybe Jen Jester. And just Marie was like, I'm not opening the building, I'm not opening the building. But, you know, we, between you and Tony and everybody else, I mean, you said, we're going to fix it and we're going to get everything finished. The dust will be cleaned up, you know, the tiles will be flattened back out and that was a very exciting day when the students got to walk down that really muddy path into the new school.
There's so many stories, there's so many pictures, and when you're trying to sum up 13 years and be respectful of an agenda, I mean, we could literally.
I know.
Sit for two hours and do a roundtable on what not to do next or what to do next or what would you prefer to have done versus everything else. But when you're trying to condense this all together, the community rallied behind this. We need to respect their request to maintain it, maintain the quality of education and keep delivering a great product. Long Meadow is about education. That's what we do here. I mean, plain and simple. And it's in your hands and you guys are doing a great job. Hang in there. It's not always easy. I've been in your seat before and I've been in the seat down the street and, of course, in the seat of a school building committee chair. So, I know what you're going through, I do, I can say that. Not a lot of people can say that. So, keep, keep going, keep going. It's hard work and town meeting's not easy and you have to maintain yourself and your composure, but you're doing well and we wish you all well.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, one other visitor presentation is we have principals from both middle schools here, Nicole Allen and Taylor Rye, to discuss budget issues and proposals. So, if the two of you would like to join in or if, I'm sorry, would you like me to introduce you two? John Wills is here too, you know, just in case. He's wanting to come up and talk. I don't want you to feel left out.
So, I guess I wasn't.
Tom, did you want to?
Where I was presenting, presenting, if you could just, I have a cold, so I'm sorry.
So, as part of the work in looking at the budget, a few meetings ago, you know, with the proposal to come back with a reconciliation based on work that the select board was doing in terms of what the amount was that was going to be proposed for the school committee, less than what school committee had adopted back in February. The admin team was going back along with Sue and looking at the special ed budget. And Nicole came forward based on what was approved in February about some changes that were going to occur at Glenbrook. So, if you recall, the budget that school committee approved included maintaining the middle school team that was initially slated to be reduced back when we presented the budget to the committee. And the proposal was to share it as a traveling team between the two middle schools. And so, Nicole ended up going back and getting some information from her teachers and coming forward to admin to say, you know, this is probably going to create more of a disruption than it's going to solve for us. They are a level one team, a level one school. The class sizes have been somewhere around the 22 range for the last few years. And it appears that the seventh and eighth grade enrollment is not going to be increasing in at least the next five years. So, she brought forward, based on some information, a proposal to look at not putting the .4 of that traveling team over at Glenbrook. Initially, when I think school committee talked, it was going to be a shared .5, .5 with the way the middle school schedule works. It doesn't break down quite that cleanly. So, it was going to be .6 at Williams and .4 at Glenbrook. And so, we asked Nicole to come and present to finance sub what her concerns were, what the concerns of the Glenbrook staff. And so she was there last week, and in your packet is some document discussing class sizes at both buildings. So I don't know if I'll let you jump in now with a little more detail, if you'd like.
Which document are they looking at?
It is the color-coded one that we discussed.
They used a lot of color?
Yes.
Okay. Unfortunately, we don't use a color printer at Glenbrook, so I'm struggling here.
Here, there you go.
Oh, there we go. All right. So basically, what we did is we sat down and took a look at, bottom line too, is that the numbers that we have right now, seventh and eighth grade, are bigger than what we're gonna have next year, and then this year will be bigger than the following year. And our numbers do go down every year from here on out. And when you take a look at our enrollment, next year in seventh grade with the one hundred and ten kids, it'll be about twenty-two average, give or take a little bit for the math classes. And if you look below, it gives you the math numbers in blue, and that's without a traveling team. So two sections of the higher-level math will be about seventeen point five, given, and then there'll be three sections of the low at about twenty-four and a half. And we do have some, a seventh grader that will be pulled out. And then the same thing goes down for eighth grade. You can see our enrollment at one oh four and what our numbers are for those. So seventeen, because the reason why that's seventeen is because we offer two languages during that block, that's why that number's lower. Most of the time it's usually just one language, and CIA is just our specialty class. And then at the end of that chart shows you the math again. And this is for Glenbrook, the math, and then it shows you what, how many kids are pulled out. So pre-algebra, there'll be three sections of seventeen, and there'll be two sections of about twenty-three and a half. So then when you go to the yellow, that's gonna bring you to with the traveling team, what our numbers would look like. So back in seventh grade, you'll see it's about eighteen kids. And what you have to take into consideration is that it's never perfect when you're doing a separate team like that, so the numbers could be in seventh grade anywhere, I believe, more like fourteen or even twelve in eighth grade, and fourteen to sixteen in seventh grade, because depending on pull-out and services and all the other stuff that goes on during blocks, that could affect that number. But on average, we're thinking about eighteen for six sections. And then the math, what will happen with that is that it'll be one of the seven-two maths, so with four sections, it'll be about eighteen or nineteen with the travel team. And then eighth grade, you can see that with the travel, it'll be anywhere between fourteen and eighteen, depending on the sections. And then the math, it'll be the higher, it'll be the algebra, it'll be three sections, and the numbers will be about fifteen to sixteen with the travel team. So further on, we just sort of talk about how it's hard even to justify why we would need more staffing with the numbers that we have right now. You know, for the last three years, we didn't have, I think our numbers were even a little higher the last three years, and, you know, we didn't, we didn't need it then, and it's kind of hard to justify needing it now. And then there's also reasons to not just, you know, I mean, yes, class sizes of fifteen would be awesome, but that's, we don't, we don't need that. And then I go on to talk about a little bit, I worked with the teams on how it would disrupt the culture of Glenbrook, so it was just different there. I don't know if you guys want me to read the bulleted points, or you want to just take a look at it if you have questions about it, plus I sound really awful right now, so I'm just trying to work through that. And I did bring some backup, Mr. Wills. I know that when we talked on Tuesday, we asked if we could bring a teacher, and a lot of the teachers couldn't come tonight, so he was here just to represent. Seventh grade, and he did speak to Tracy Bongo, the eighth grade math teacher as well, to sort of get some feedback as well as how it, how in the trenches it affects them. I know from our perspective, you can see it here, that the scheduling, the separate team, before-school and after-school support, science labs prepping and, you know, trying to set up and break down, parent-teacher conferences, interdisciplinary and cross-curricular planning and collaboration. I listed it all here for you to see. And then he was here if you guys had questions for him as far as how it impacts the teachers in the trenches, so.
So the proposal would be to maintain .6 of the four teachers that are on the team. They would, they would work at Williams exclusively. We asked Taylor to come in case there are any questions about the impact of keeping .6 positions. That would eliminate 1.6 FTEs from budget, which would equate to, again, depending upon the staffing, but based on the individuals in those positions right now, would be approximately eighty-five thousand dollars.
How much?
Eighty-five thousand.
All right. So shall we open it up for questions?
Sure.
Kim, did you, was that Ian gone up?
Have you guys talked with the middle school team to see if we would be able to keep the current team that we have if we were to do this?
Can you be more specific about?
The four teachers that we wanna go from a 1.0 to a .6?
Realistically, a .6 position isn't ideal. Obviously, an ideal position would be full-time. We, the, a big issue would be stopping and seeing who's out there and who would want a .6 position.
I guess I was gonna double-check, so we would need four .6 teachers.
Yeah, that is correct. Math, science, English, and social studies.
Russ?
So, I mean, I don't mind talking about this tonight, but I think if we're gonna vote on something like this, we should put it more clearly on the agenda so people know this is a potential, because the agenda for tonight just says budget update or something like that. So that's one thing. But the other thing that concerns me is that the timing of this, I mean, we went through the whole budget discussion, we talked about whether we really needed this team, and the decision was, yes, we need it, and we should probably split it. And so, if this had come up earlier, I think our discussion with the town might have been different, because it's, you know, eighty-five thousand dollars, and we've been arguing over a hundred, and then twenty-five thousand. So I'm a little concerned that this is coming up now, when we went through this whole process before, and the fact that maybe we don't need the full team is now coming up at this point. The other thing I'd say is that I think four teachers that are .6, especially in math and science, that's gonna be very hard to fill a .6 at the middle school level in math and science. They're hard enough to fill normally. So if we're gonna try and fill two .6es, I think that's gonna be a struggle. The other thing I wonder about is that Williams, you're gonna have a team of .6 teachers, and presumably, they're all gonna be new teachers. So you're gonna have a team of four teachers that are probably inexperienced, the ones that might be willing to take a .6, and what are parents gonna think of that? You know, are they gonna want their kids on that team, or are they all gonna be asking to go to the other Williams teams? So I think those are some of my concerns. I also have some concern about the union's position, which I haven't heard yet, but I think we were all talking about trying to keep that team together, and now maybe we're not talking about doing that. I also wonder about, you know, if the discussion is, well, we don't really need the lower class sizes at Glenbrook, is the same true at Williams? Because it basically levels out, it gets closer to leveling out if we have a split team. So, I mean, I have a whole bunch of kind of concerns about it. I understand the position, because I think it causes some scheduling problems. I mean, that was pretty clear from what you gave us. So I have no problem talking about it more, but I have a variety of concerns about the idea, so.
Well, the first part of your question is why, why are you finding out now? School committee gave Glenbrook the staffing, they didn't ask for it. And so Nicole was offered the staff and went back and talked to her staff and began looking at scheduling and how would you use this, and realized all the factors that she wrote down here. You'd have twenty students traveling together. You would, you would limit students' exposure to getting help from teachers. There are numbers of reasons. So as soon as she was able to do that work, she told us, and as soon as I knew, I informed you that day, as soon as I found out. So I think it was a generous offer of school committee, but it was something that the staff didn't ask for at Glenbrook, and therefore, they needed time to problem-solve when it was given to them.
Yeah, but I think we made that pretty clear months ago. So, you know, it's, we're in the thick of a budget discussion with the town, where we're really having pretty contentious discussions with them. This is something that would have been, if it had come up back then, I think our discussions with the town might have been a lot more fruitful than they were. And plus, I mean, I think the finance committee, the board of selectmen, they all heard, nothing else we can cut, and then it turns out, maybe there is something else we can cut. So I think from a relationship with the town point of view, I also see that as a problem. Because if I was on the board of selectmen, I'd be wondering why you didn't tell me this before. I mean, it's...
I guess I wasn't sure I could give that information either. Like, I felt like it was, like, talked about, but I wasn't sure if it was, like, is it my place to jump in now and say, do you know what I mean?
I don't think it was either one of you. I mean, I think it was either the committee or, you know, I think it was really people sitting at this table that would have been asking you to give us something a little earlier. I don't think it was the two of you at all, so.
But if I can add, the decision was made here without input from administration. The administrative team spent time working on the budget. We brought forward a proposal, the proposal included cutting the team. The decision was then made to keep the team and then tell Glenbrook, "You're getting .4 of these positions," without any input from the administrators about how does that work? What does it do from an educational perspective to the students who are now gonna be in that, on that team? And so that's why we're bringing it forward. We were forced with tough decisions to try to make our budget work, and we went to places we don't normally rely on to balance our budget. We're bringing back an alternative to you to say, "We don't like the solution we voted on. We all know, we don't wanna use those one-time sources to balance the budget. Well, here's an option." And, you know, our administrators are saying that the solution that was given to them wasn't something they asked for, and, you know, it's probably gonna create more of a disruption than it is going to solve in terms of creating the best educational experience for the students at Glenbrook. So that's why, I think, why it's coming up now, not, you know, a month ago.
Right. Can I just ask a kind of a point of clarification?
Sure.
So, you know, and obviously, I remember all of these great conversations about keeping the team. But, okay, so Nicole's saying that she doesn't necessarily need that half of the team. What is the impact on Taylor's side for the remainder of that team? Is that...
Like, keeping the whole team?
Or not?
Or not. It comes down to class size. One of the things we need to consider is high-quality teachers.
Right.
There's something that was brought up as well with a .6. There's a lot of factors in play here, but ultimately, we wanna do what's best for the kids. So we need to determine, is it class size that is, that's ideal, or is it the high-quality teachers, or is it all of the above?
And what, what was the projected class size if we eliminated the team at Williams?
I'll let the principal answer that. He would know better than I.
If they eliminated the team, it would be, it would be on the high end of close to twenty-five.
Okay. That's good to know.
On average?
On average. When, in middle school scheduling, math really does dictate class sizes and foreign languages as well. So if there's a foreign language offered in that period, the class sizes will decrease. If there isn't, then obviously, the class sizes will increase.
I have this sheet from when we talked about it in February, or January, maybe, in finance sub, and it says, eighth grade, one hundred and eighteen students, pre-algebra sixty-one, algebra fifty-eight, two sections, two sections of algebra averaging twenty-eight students, and three sections of pre-algebra averaging twenty. Three sections of algebra equals point, eighteen point six students, and two sections of pre-algebra averaging thirty point five. And then we were proposing three sections of algebra using a math specialist, which would bring the student...
Yeah, that was a document a long time ago. That was one of the initial ones that we were trying to figure out, using the staff. And again, that specifically is talking about the math numbers.
Right, which is one of my concerns, when I hear...
Yeah, it's really high. And so, one of the proposals was having just a math teacher. And so we've gone through a lot of proposals to try to figure out what would work best for Williams.
So we had twenty sixteen, seventeen elimination of a seven, eight team. Grade seven team total, four teachers, five sections, a teacher, twenty-five point two students. Grade eight team total, four teachers, with one hundred and eighteen students, was a twenty-three point six average?
That was just the basic divide.
Basic divide.
Yeah.
But math was really our concern.
It is, because it's a, it's not an easily divided by number, where we have more kids in advance versus standard now, or vice versa.
What is, what is it if you were to keep, I mean, I know you can't go back and rework some numbers right this second, but is it a realistic thing to think about keeping two of the team and somehow trying to work that out so that...
That would be required dual licensure, and that would be probably even more difficult to find then for .6 teachers.
So first off, I would like to thank Nicole and the team at Glenbrook for coming forward and, you know, thankfully, you know, thanking us for giving them something they didn't ask for, but respectfully requesting that they not have it. I think that that shows a lot from our, our teachers and our admin of that, you know, we're trying to give them something that they need, and they don't necessarily need it in that area. It acknowledges that they're respectful of our budget and our whole process. And John Wills, I'm gonna call on you, because I'm assuming that...
He's been with me all day. He has to get asked a question.
He needs some questions. Is, I, you know, from the discussions you've had with the faculty at Glenbrook, and from being in the classroom with class sizes, you guys are unanimously comfortable with what Nicole is bringing forward? Come on up to a microphone. Sorry.
Nice, Taylor.
Sorry, dude.
So, I guess I should, I need to preface my comments with, I would be a little reluctant to say I'm speaking unanimously for the staff.
And that's not fair to ask, I'm sorry.
No, that's a totally fair question. I am comfortable talking about my own personal experience in a building that had, when we had a travel team, and I can give voice to some of the concerns that were given, you know, explicitly expressed to me, absolutely. I don't know, I'm comfortable speculating too much, too far afield on what my colleagues may or may not think. So I'm hoping, happy to tell you whatever I can, but bear in mind, so we're keeping the narrow context of the way it's intended. Does that make sense?
And I know that from having children who have been, who have attended Glenbrook, is both teams are very tight-knit, very cohesive, very integrative with education across the subject.
Right.
So I certainly understand the concern about bringing in a travel team and how that plays into how you guys operate there.
Right. So I guess, I could speak to how that impacts us as teachers, how you all balance that in terms of trying to mitigate costs and all those other things, that's for you all. But I can say, as teachers, we, I guess I would look at this as balancing class size, the benefits of having smaller classes, and there are benefits to that, against sort of how that impacts the teaming model that we use at the middle school, which I think is really appropriate. And so, the teaming model is such that four core teachers and support staff, special education and their staff, share all the students, and that just enables us, that facilitates our ability to support kids, have conversations about students, do things as a group, for example. And when students are removed from that, that our experience has been in the past, that makes it more difficult to do those things. It's not impossible, but it compromises our ability sort of serve the students in that respect. So that's, you know, the balance you guys are struggling with, but I can offer that.
And the class sizes that Nicole's presented to us for, projected for next year, are they any more or less than what you've experienced over the last few years? I don't have that information in front of me, I'm sorry.
Right. No, that's okay. I've, in my time here, I've had classes with as few as thirteen kids and as many as thirty-one, thirty-two, and thankfully, that's, those are the outliers. Generally, I suppose our classes fall comfortably in the eighteen to twenty-four, twenty-five range, and again, it's a function of scheduling. Some classes can be more robustly filled than others. But I've, I'm, I'm okay with however many kids are in the room, and, you know, I can manage, I suppose.
Kathy, can I call on you for a question? I'm sorry.
Yes, you may.
Please, come on up.
Do you want me to leave at this point? No.
I don't care who, bring an extra chair up.
I can stand in the middle.
No, so Kathy, my question to you in terms of being union president is, have you gotten, have concerns been brought to you from any, and I don't mean particular, I'm just talking generalities, but from Glenbrook teachers about class sizes and how they compare to class sizes at, at Williams?
No.
Okay. So you've not had any concerns about, you know, God, my class sizes are twenty-four, twenty-five?
No, I have none.
Okay. And I'm sorry, Russ, you...
Well, I understand that the team issue and the fact that we split a team is gonna be an issue at Glenbrook, but why don't we have that same problem at Williams if we only have .6 left over there? Is it a different schedule, or how's that?
That was what I was gonna ask next.
Can I ask, can I speak as a Williams teacher?
You can, you can change your hat.
I can do that in heart.
Okay.
This is very disruptive, and I need, you need to understand, there's four people's lives that you're dealing with, and this is part union, part... and this is part of union, part... As a person who's been at Williams for 29 years, I'm not the oldest at the building. I've just been there the longest, just clarifying. But talking with these four teachers, you've cut them, you've reinstated them, you've put them at .6. Their life is in a shambles right now, number one. Number two, if you go to .6, say they work one day from 8:30, 8:20 to 1:10. There's no after-school help. The next day they work from 10 to 3, well, there's after-school help. There's no continuity for a child. That's a problem. You're looking at class sizes that are averages. I mean, you have two committee members that have sixth graders. You're looking at averages, but you look at math. Math, you can't do averages in the sense of it's tracked. So that's a very difficult thing. And you look at, you know, you're talking about school climate, morale. You have a .6, they have no life in a building. They're going to come, you, .6, if, you have to understand, it's a .6, it's a full-time job. I understand you're looking to cut, but you also need to think of the students and their welfare. I'll go back to something you asked, Taylor. You're looking at, you're going to have newbies. Our parents, Russ, you brought this up, our parents are going to want four brand-new teachers. We've just gotten back to a level-one status, and I don't want to be sitting here in two years and have you go, you guys are at level two, you're doing a horrible job. That's going to be a problem. Obviously, I'm very passionate about this because we are a family as a faculty. I get your dollars and cents, but you've dealt with these four people. They have had a roller coaster spring. I've tried to explain to them, this is budget season, this is what it's about. But a .6 would only be a disservice to Williams. I won't even get into the union side of that, but... It's very important because right now morale is very, very low because of this information.
Taylor, can I ask you a question too? Oh, Kathy, you may as well just sit nearby, you know, you and John, bring up extra chairs. Because I'm sure there will be more questions. But Taylor, my question to you, and, and I don't know if you've considered it or not, and I guess it goes along with what maybe you had brought up, is what if you kept a full-time math teacher? I, I mean, and, and I don't know if you've even thought this far or played around with it to say, okay, instead of having 4.6 teachers, and I know you talked about the dual specialties. Because I know in middle school, you have to teach your area of expertise.
Yes.
But if you, if you kept a full-time math teacher, because that seems to be the area that's so unpredictable, could something like that work with keeping without the rest of that team? And, and I'm not trying to disparage anybody else from that team. But if, if .6, if, if that's not amenable to teachers or that's difficult to fill...
To be honest, um, the, I, I was, this whole discussion started last, uh, the week before vacation. So this is really, I thought we were good, we're not, like, now things are changing. So, um, the, it's, again, you know, there's a lot of information going out. But to answer your question, um, with the ma, in math in specific, yes, we're going to have small maths class sizes. But we also have to take in consideration with two, offering two math classes a period, there's still only one ELA, one science, one social studies being offered. So those class sizes will increase.
Right. But those will be the 25 average class sizes.
Potentially, yes.
Which is more similar to Glenbrook's as opposed to the 17, 16, 17, 18 class sizes? If a full team was kept at Williams?
The, the class size will increase, yes. That is correct.
But the concern that I keep hearing from everybody is the, the class sizes of math because of the differentiation. And so that's why I'm just trying to think out loud, is if you kept a math teacher, so instead of, you know, so you have the extra assistance.
It would give you flexibility and stuff.
And gives you the flexibility, but the other three classes have the increased class size. Is that even a possibility? And Sue, Tom, and Marie, I don't know if, if you want to weigh in or if that is or not.
Can I just speak to one point, just because we just did the tour a little while ago, on the science class sizes? If those increase, and the rooms are already pretty tight with the science labs, they're not wheelchair accessible. I know that if you were to increase those class sizes, and actually spoke with one of the teachers in there, that, that would make things difficult. You'd have to count on there being wheelchairs in those rooms in the near future, so that's another concern. I don't know if it's a building, you know, concern, but...
But is that not the same concern at Glenbrook? Because those...
That room is much bigger than...
Their science labs can hold more, too.
24.
They can hold 24.
24.
Ours can sit 16. If you tuck a standard at the end, you probably could do 20.
So that's, that's what I noted during the walk-through.
A standard, meaning a person standing at the end.
That's what I'm, that's what I was thinking you were saying.
So the students are different, you know, that's part, part...
It's during, only during labs.
I mean, they're there, they're just not actively engaged while they're partnered, they're group made.
How many tables are in the science classrooms?
So classrooms have 25 desks, sitting desks. Um, there's a, one class, uh, two classrooms have desks, and one cla, and one science classroom has a table, uh, five tables, which can house four ta, four students at each table.
Do any of the rooms have more kids in them right now than they're supposed to have according to fire safety regulations?
No, not that I'm aware of, no.
So I guess, oh, sorry.
Russ?
Another way to ask it is, is it better to have 4.6 teachers or a full-time math and a full-time science teacher? I mean, is that?
Ideally, what would be best is to have small class sizes and highly qualified teachers.
But if you can't have exactly what you want?
Right. The difference between want and need.
What's workable, but not...
And you're not answering this right now. It could be next meeting because...
To, to be honest, I, I need to look at the data. Like I said, this is, this is, like, this is new information. Um, and I need to work with Assistant Superintendent Mazin, Superintendent Doyle, um, to really, um, be able to answer that question.
So just to kind of recap really quickly, what I think we're trying to get at is, we're comfortable with what Nicole's saying, saying, all right, we're not going to give that.
Thank you, but no, thank you.
Yeah, we're not going to give you that added position for traveling team.
I want to be clear too. I don't want to make a push that I'm like pushing to you guys to be like a .6. It's just, it just feels like, in order to keep the whole team justified by giving us the .4, but we're like, we don't...
Wouldn't happen if we had one middle school, I'm just saying, but, um...
But you're saying thank you, but no, thank you.
That's exactly what we're saying.
Yeah, so 13 students, this won't be a problem anymore. Uh, all right, so we're comfortable with what Glenbrook is, you know, basically bringing up. And now we have to figure out, how can we, you know, kind of construct a staffing model based on these positions at Williams that doesn't impact quality of teaching students and doesn't, you know, disrupt staff and impact morale? And somewhere in the middle of that, try to find some savings to offset some of the one-time monies we're using in our budget? That's where we're at?
Yeah, and I agree with Russ's point. A decision doesn't have to be made today.
No, I just wanted to make sure we were all kind of, we knew what the conversation was becoming.
Correct.
But I think if we can save the 80 or 70, whatever it is, ends up being $75,085. And make it work with what Russ is saying. If you could, in a perfect scenario, keep two of the four, which two would make the best?
Yeah. And the question is also, are we comfortable having some sections that have a little bit of a higher class size and some that have a little bit of a lower class size?
Russ?
So I just want to be clear. I think what, what I'm saying really is, one, I want to see the special ed savings, you know, once they, once we figure that out. And talk about that at the same time we talk about this, because I'd really prefer to try and be more efficient somewhere than cutting somebody. So...
Well, I understand that, but I think...
And maybe it's a combination of the two, but it's hard to talk about it by itself.
Than...
Well, it's how we have fluidity, especially with the tuitions.
But if we look at the contractual lines, we should be able to settle up there. But it, it's a little more involved in seeing who's stepping up next year to the next grade levels and seeing what services they'll be needing there in the middle of transition meetings now as we speak. Moving from one school to the next, so...
So Sue, is it realistic that at our next meeting, which is the day before town meeting?
I think I might have a report that night anyway, but yeah.
For you to have what Russ is asking for of you?
Yes.
Okay. And so then, Taylor, that would be, a two-week time is realistic. And, and I'm sorry to the four teachers who this is involving. I understand that this is horrific, and I wish there was a way that we could fix it and, and not be just struggling over these four. But we have to also realize, we've also, you know, made cuts for other teacher positions in other places as well. It's not just these four individuals. And not that we want to cut anybody, but it's the reality of a budget. Russ?
Yeah, I guess what I would add to that is, but, we already voted a budget. So now we'd have to have a motion to reconsider, we'd have to go through, you know...
We wouldn't be changing our, well, we wouldn't be changing our general fund amount.
Right.
We would, if there's a way to make some changes in terms of the staffing, some of the line items that are now being funded with those one-time sources would be shifted to the general fund.
But does that require a revoting of our budget?
We would, we have to revise our budget at some point before July 1.
It would be a revision, which is what we normally do.
Correct.
After town meeting and throughout the year is with budget revisions.
We already have to do it anyways because we didn't have the school choice 50,000 in there back when you approved the budget on February 11. So we would have to do that.
Right. So those revisions are part of our normal routine business that we take care of. It's not that we would have to revoke our whole budget.
Well, I'm not saying our whole budget. What, see, the thing is, we specifically said we weren't cutting that team. That, that was the idea. We're going to split the team. It was part of the budget we voted. Now we're saying maybe we're not going to do it, even though that part of the budget was all, all seven of us voted for that. Which is fine. We can change our mind. I think it does affect people that probably were thinking we weren't. But that may be the will of the committee. I think we should put it on the agenda clearly so people know that that's what we might do. I think the special ed should be listed under budget due, so that's clear, we're going to talk about that. And then we see what the committee wants to do. It's unfortunate, you have four people that are probably very confused by the whole thing, but that's where we're at.
I just kind of ask, since I, I agree with what you're saying. Can I, can I just ask, what, for our committee, for our subcommittee, for our principals, what are our specific next steps, just so everybody's on the same page? Like, what are the, what can we expect at the next meeting? What can we expect after town meeting?
So what I'm hearing is that for next meeting, May 9th, is Sue will be presenting special ed dollar amounts and data. And that we're asking Taylor to work with Marie to look at options for scheduling at Williams. Is that correct in what I'm interpreting?
No, we'll visit the science classrooms to see how many can fit around a lab table comfortably.
So that's what's going to be presented for our...
Because Glenbrook's tight too.
Yeah.
When you, the Glenbrook science labs are very tight.
Right.
So I'll go and make a comparison to Glenbrook and Williams and see how many students can fit around a table and how the space compares with the two schools.
Okay. So then the next two steps, just to kind of...
So that, all of that information will be provided at our next meeting as an agenda item under budget with those two items specifically listed. John?
Why can't we just withdraw the idea of having a traveling team? It, it's, it's running up against a wall here. Let's just say that was a bad idea. It was driven by us fooling around with the budget figures, and we're not going to do it. Okay? That, uh, the comfort of the teachers and working with the, the students is, is more important. Am I making sense?
I think the issue at this point is more, is it going to be four 1.0s at Williams? Or is it going to be .6s at Williams, or two out of the four at Williams? I think the Glenbrook idea seems, I mean, if you don't need them, then you don't need them. I mean, that's...
Without having smaller class sizes at Williams than we do at any of the elementary or high school levels. I mean, that's what we're looking at, John, with having the extra team there.
I wonder, any testimony that the class levels aren't that important?
With keeping that full team...
It'll still be a functioning classroom. It'll be a better functioning classroom than with these travelers. And the travelers were something we got rid of four or five years ago.
Right.
That was a goal.
And I...
Now we're back to travel time.
Well, I think we're all on the same page as you.
I think we're all on the same page with traveling, John. But the question now is, do we keep a full team at Williams where class sizes will be 16, 17 students versus 22 versus 20, up to 23, 24 at elementary school and the same at the high school?
Well, the alternative there is to redistrict then, right? Now, how many want to get, get into that?
No, it's because of...
Not tonight.
Not tonight. Paul's like, please don't push me over the edge.
Isn't that, isn't that the reason there's such an imbalance between the numbers of Glenbrook and Williams? That we haven't redistricted properly? Well...
I guess I wanted to, I wanted to piggyback off of John, what John was saying. And I, and I do think we should, from what we're hearing, forget about the traveling team. But I would like to consider basically maintaining what we have at Williams and just letting that be. I do think that that's, you know, it was a surprise to me to see the cuts. I think when we were working the numbers and, you know, now we're not looking at the same comparisons as we were before when this budget came out, but it didn't seem to make sense right now, and I heard that from a few of us here, to cut the team at Williams now. The, the numbers don't make sense yet. If they do at some point, then, you know, and the population goes down enough so that we're not stretching to be above at class, you know, the state average for class sizes. And we're not, um, you know, giving up that thing that I know, Marie, you've paid so much attention to since I've been working, is the small class sizes and maintaining that, maintaining quality teachers and small class sizes. Because that's what makes Long Meadow what it is. That's why we're excellent. So I think to look at the, at cutting this team at this point is just not, and we already voted on it. We were unanimous to leave this team as it, you know, of, the team of four teachers in the budget. Keep them at, you know, on our staff. And I, I just have a hard time that we keep revisiting this. So I, I would like to, I've said this before, just, let's keep it, let's revisit it next year if it needs to come up because our, but I think we also heard from some people that the sixth-grade class that's going to be in seventh grade next year is bigger than the seventh-grade class is this year.
It'll be 125, seventh grade next year, 119 for eighth grade.
So why would we cut a team now?
And income is projected to be 108.
And I think in all fairness, Michelle, I understand what you're saying and that the vote was unanimous. Um, I'll go back to, um, you know, something that you often reference is, that vote was taken at 10:30 at night after three and a half hours of discussing a budget, um, with Tom making a suggestion of using school choice funds in order to balance the budget, which I never, in my wildest dreams, would have thought that that would happen.
That's not the vote I'm talking about.
That was the vote on the budget.
The initial vote that we took, that was unanimous, because that vote wasn't unanimous. The initial vote that we took was back in Jan, February, and that was unanimous vote to support the budget that we put forward to, to select board.
So I think what has to get kind of worked out is not so much, do we cut the team or do we revisit that vote? But it's, do we move forward into the next school year with .6 FTEs across the board at Williams? And I think that's what we're waiting to hear at the next meeting.
Well, I think we just heard that that isn't really a good idea.
Right, and so it's how do you...
But we haven't, but Taylor also said he hasn't worked out all the details or looked at that in depth.
Right.
Sue?
Is it feasible to let?
Let them go back and look at, well, I was talking. Just to let them.
Kathy is that we're going to have the same issues that Glenbrook has with teachers not being available in the morning or in the afternoon. I mean, I'm sorry, I don't have a middle schooler. I don't know how it all works. But I know, but I mean, all these bullet points that, as, how it would be disruptive to the culture of Glenbrook. I think it, by having four part-time teachers at Williams, you're going to have very similar bullet points.
But I think that, yeah...
Why don't we let Sue finish what she was saying?
So, oh, so thank you. So I really think it's their job to take the information back that they have and, and the data that they have and, and potentially come to the table to talk to you with one or two or three scenarios. One may be a full-time team, Michelle, and I don't know what they might come up with. But at the end of the day, things that they feel are appropriate, that they can live with, and maybe give you some more information to make a really well-informed decision.
Right. But I think we need to see the special ed numbers. I think the reality is we're confronting a situation where a cut has to be made. Something has to go. We recommended cutting the team at Williams because we had a number that we had to meet. We brought that forward, that was not acceptable. Um, when Nicole came forward and said that that was not feasible to do that at Glenbrook, it was an option of .6, is that where you want to save money? I think when we see the special ed numbers or the savings there, that will give us more information to make a more informed decision as well.
Yeah, and... Yeah.
I guess something has to go, but not this year. I mean, right now we have a budget that's balanced that the towns voted in favor of, the board selectmen.
By using school choice.
Right, but it's using 250,000 of one-time funds.
It's not 250.
It is. If you add up the school choice funds, the preschool funds, the utilities, all of those are one-time funds.
Okay, but let's say we take 50 from special ed this year, and next year we have to cut the team. I mean, if we're using one-time funds this year, it means next year we can, obviously, but...
When you say this year, it's FY '17, just want to make sure.
Yeah, this coming year. So this coming year, we keep the team. The year after that, we're closer to the year when we may not need that team, and you cut then. I mean, that's another option. So I'm not saying it has to happen right this second. Maybe it happens the following year. Now, that poor team is going to be wondering what's happening with these positions, but based on enrollment, I mean, two years out, it looks like that's an obvious time where we probably don't need the team anymore.
Yeah, I just personally don't feel it's responsible to go into, to leave a school committee a budget that's already 250,000 short for the following year.
Well, it's never going to be 250, because we're getting another 100, so it's 150.
We're not getting 100. It's 250 from our side, it's 250 from the town.
Yeah, but the state gives us 100 the following year. So that's not, that is not one-time money, that first 100.
If the town gets it to us. Because it goes to the town.
Well, it's, right now it's on their side, so they can keep it because it's in our budget anyway. They're using free cash, so they should get the other 100. I mean, that's just a wash, though. So it's 150 we're really talking about.
So, my suggestion at this point is, you know, it seems like we're all trying to kind of get a stronger grip on sort of the new information that was presented to us. I think what Taylor asked for was an opportunity to go back and figure out the best way to make this work, and we're not going to know, obviously, until he has a chance to do that. So I would suggest that at this point, we let him do that, and we let Sue finish the work she was doing, and then we can have a more sort of robust and specific conversation about this on the meeting on the 9th.
The 9th.
Drop that deep reference in there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have to be there on the 9th? No.
Thank you.
Can I?
For Taylor, no.
I think we need to get moving for the entire, though.
Yeah.
All right. So moving back to the agenda.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thanks.
Okay, we...
Old Business, 6.
What, John?
Old Business.
Oh, we're back on to Old Business with the Director of Pupil Services. Last meeting, we interviewed both finalists for the Director of Pupil Services position, Gina Roy and Jean Fontaine. And so it was left for this meeting to discuss and make a motion of who the committee would like, yes?
I'd like to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion. I had my hand up first.
You let him.
All right, John, make a motion.
I move the school committee appoint Jean Fontaine as the next Director of Pupil Services pending successful contract negotiation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Michael?
I just, you know, want to kind of say thank you to both Jean and the other woman.
Gina?
Gina. Yep, both of them. For, yeah, her name, her name is right in front of me, Gina Roy and Jean Fontaine for applying, for coming forward and, you know, being willing to lead our pupil services. I'm going to vote tonight in support of Jean Fontaine. Just kind of looking at my ratings, it was close, but, you know, Jean certainly came out a little bit ahead. You know, she's someone who knows Long Meadow. She's someone who, you know, understands, you know, what's going on in our schools, has been around, you know, and certainly is, who can, you know, she can certainly fill some pretty big shoes that Sue left several years ago. So I'm pretty enthusiastic about Jean, and I'm looking forward to voting for her.
Russ, did you have your hand raised?
No.
Michelle?
Yes, I will say thank you to both candidates and all the candidates that interviewed. I think that in terms of our finalists, both Gina and Jean came to us with great qualities, and I think they'd both do a great job. I'm going to support Jean because I think, you know, A, she already works for us, I think it's important to, to give people promotions when we feel that they are qualified and that they would do a good job, and I think she'd be a fantastic fit for the position, so...
Marie?
Marty contacted me to say that he did reference checks and met with both candidates, and while they were both strong, he felt that Jean was a good match for Long Meadow. He felt that her extensive experience in special education would be important for the leader in that position. So he would like me to inform you that he favors the appointment of Jean Fontaine.
John?
I believe we have two excellent candidates. I think the strength of Jean Fontaine is that she is the person we know and have worked with, and as my colleague Michelle said, we recognize talent and it's good to promote from within people that we've worked with and know quite well. But again, they're both very fine candidates.
Anyone else? Russ?
I think with... Looking at both candidates, I think they're, either one of them would be very good for the position. I know Gina Roy had a number of people that say very good things about her, she seems to be a very good administrator. You know, she's honest, intelligent, I mean, there's, there's a lot of qualities that you would want in an administrator. The same things were said about Jean, and it was really, I think Jean's experience is much more focused on special ed than Gina Roy's is. So of the two, and the fact that she works for us, and she has a very good reputation in Long Meadow. I mean, there's, you never hear anybody say anything bad about her. So that's very important, and I do think it's important to consider the person that you know the best. That said, I will say that Gina Roy had very good references. I mean, she's, people think she's a very good administrator. I just think that this is probably not necessarily the right position for her compared to the person that we already have internally.
Anyone else? All right, seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
So who will notify the two candidates?
That would be, Mr. Maslow was in charge of that subcommittee, was he not?
I was. Be happy to.
Just a quick question. I don't know if in that conversation you might, we're going to have a position open from where Jean was, so I don't know if Gina might want to apply for that, but I think she would, you know, she would consider it. I think she would do a great job. We'd be lucky to have her in our system.
I will let her know.
And so we all do need to return all of our notes, packets and information to Diane for the files, so just please remember that this evening before you leave. All right, superintendent report.
All right. Well, we have a vacation, so it's a short report. I hope that we've had a wonderful vacation and enjoy time with your children. Williams Middle School attended a game at Fenway Park where they were invited to actually sing the National Anthem. They do this every year, thanks to Michael Smith, the choral teacher at Williams. They, I actually got a text from another superintendent that said I'm at Fenway Park, and the kids were unbelievable. So congratulations to our staff and students for singing at Fenway Park and really rocking the park. We did have two trips go to Europe last week. High school students traveled, one group to France and another group to Italy and Greece. They had wonderful opportunities in this cultural, educational experience. Thanks to our staff for allowing students the opportunity to experience different cultures and different people. And then finally, I did send you a position paper today from MASSSS, that's Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents. They have put out a position that we're opposing the legalization of marijuana for many reasons. I think one of the things that we're seeing from all the speakers that come in and talk to us in the district is that one of the problems with the opiate addiction right now is that they're lacing marijuana with more substantial drugs. And so it's, that's one of the reasons that we're opposed to this, because students are being, they're being exposed to more addictive drugs through the marijuana. Also, they took a look at what was happening in Colorado. There's been an 85% increase in students in hospitalization since marijuana was legalized in Colorado. So if you read the report, there are many more reasons, but I'm certainly in support of MASSSS's position not to legalize marijuana.
Any questions for Marie?
Yeah, I have some. I'm not an advocate of the use of marijuana, but I've been reading quite a bit about the legalization of it, and crime in Colorado has gone down considerably as a result of the legalization of marijuana. As far as, you know, lacing the marijuana with other drugs, well, of course, yeah, you would have some kind of rules in place, just like you can't mix certain chemicals in with liquor or beer. You know, you have standards and you enforce them. I just wonder if the superintendents have really thought this thing through. We have an incarceration rate in this country that's incredibly high, and we call ourselves a free country. We've got more people incarcerated, I believe, than just about anybody else, except maybe Russia or China. And again, I'm not an advocate of going out and using it. I think on health grounds, it's probably not good for your lungs. Any, any smoke is not good for your lungs. But in terms of the social impact of it, legalization seems to do quite a bit to take this work out of the hands of organized crime and other folks who are inclined to doctor the product and try and push some more dangerous stuff. So I just offer that as a quick rebuttal. Perhaps we could find some other information that would educate us all a little better.
And I'll just, can I follow up?
But that's just my comment.
Really quickly, and so, you know, obviously, this comes, you know, in anticipation of a ballot question that's going to appear on the November ballot, and it's by an organization called the Committee to Tax Marijuana Like Alcohol. There's a number of high-level people opposing the ballot question, including Governor Baker, Mayor Walsh of Boston, and recently, I'm going to put my workout on for one second. Recently, the Massachusetts Senate formed a committee, a special committee, to investigate states like Colorado and Washington, which have legalized it in Washington DC as well. And they took a group of eight to 10 senators to Colorado, spent a week visiting dispensaries and learning about it. The Massachusetts Senate Committee, Special Committee on Marijuana, put out a report, which is available on the legislature's website. They were not supposed to take a position, and while they treaded that line very carefully, they did come out on the opposite side of the ballot question. They, they're very strongly opposed to many aspects of it, especially public health officials warn about the use of edibles, which is part of legislation, not just for young children getting into what looks like candy, but also animals. That being said, I'm not taking a position on this, but I just thought that would be a good point of information for the committee and the community.
All right, anyone else? Sam, I know we were on break, did you have anything from the Stevens?
Yeah.
Bless you. Did you have another question for Marie? Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just have a few updates.
Sure.
Coming up this Thursday is the annual senior event, High Meadows. So, yeah, we're very excited. All the seniors will go to High Meadows, and there'll be outdoor activities, there'll be food, there'll be music. We're very excited. Also coming up next month, May 26th, is our Major Works Concert. So all different musical groups, the orchestra, wind ensemble, the band, full spectrum of singing groups will perform. It's our last concert, and we're, it's going to be a great concert. I, I'm in a few of the groups, and I'm very excited. Believe it or not, prom is around the corner. I think the date is June 2nd, and we're very excited for that. It's at the Law Cabin. And finally, tomorrow at 4 o'clock at Russell Field, the baseball team will be playing East Long Meadow, if the weather holds. I think it's supposed to rain tomorrow, 90% chance, but just in case the baseball gods come through. We'd love to have some support. It's our rival, so love to see everyone there.
All right. Finance sub, was there anything else out of finance sub from your meeting?
I think I'll let me get that.
Energy Task Force, Liz, did you have anything?
We met two weeks ago, and we had some things that we planned to do for our next, and we check in every Tuesday, but I think we're going to have a meeting. But basically, we've found a couple projects this year that we want to use our Green Communities money for, and we have a couple issues that prevent us, for example, from Eversource, the energy company that we use. But we're thinking things like electric car charging station perhaps in town, maybe green building designs for the new DPW, or another thing that we found was a monitoring system for all the town cars, and it will monitor idling, energy usage, maintenance. So we meet next week.
Okay. You have a Facebook page if you want to tell us?
Oh, right, sorry. Sorry, we have a Facebook page. What's it called?
Long Meadow Energy Task Force.
Yes.
I'll follow you.
Please do.
I have a question on, I know you guys at one point looked into solar panels, and they keep changing, you know, the benefits of them and everything. Have you considered that again?
So this, we have a guy that we're working with, and basically, he's going to try to find a plan for us to use our energy savings to invest in projects for the town. So that would be part of it, but because we haven't heard much back from him yet, because he has to study all the energy-using buildings and cars and everything in town, so that would be the idea of where to do solar.
Okay. And I know I saw during one of the select board meetings, there was some grant that they were holding on to, to apply for, because they were looking for things like that, is this...
Right, so we have, I don't know how much it is, it's like 100 and, 100 and something thousand dollars that we have, we got for becoming a Green Community.
125.
125. And so we can't, we have to use it all before we can get any more. And every year, we're eligible because we get points for doing things around the community.
And that's what we're trying to spend this money on, is these projects, but right now, the driving project that Stephen is looking for us to spend it on is the green energy design of, for the DPW. So that's what, that we're trying to spend that on, so that we can hopefully, and hoping to spend it this year.
Yeah.
So that we can reapply again next year.
Yeah, another one.
How would that happen this year for DPWs?
I guess you can put it towards architectural design costs.
But it's not even up until the fall. I mean, by the time we vote in the fall, then they'd immediately do it, I guess.
Right. That's why we have four other things that we want to use it on.
That's why we have a couple other ideas, but the main...
No.
All right. Any other subcommittee reports?
Just got a quick legislative update. The House is in budget right now, this week, and I'm sure they'll be done a lot quicker than the Senate will be, just given the structure of the House. Some, and the MASC sent out a very nice legislative update. Some basic information, the House Ways and Means Budget increases Chapter 70 by $95 million, which is spread to the communities, so Long Meadow got a little bit of above, not much. $95 million doesn't get you much these days. That's above, so that's, so that's a good amount. That's about $55 per pupil, which is a good reimbursement. Some other things that don't impact Long Meadow as much, but regional school transportation was funded at $60 million. Town Blakeham and Wilberham deal with that. And Circuit Breaker is in there as well. The current law requires that, you know, 75% of those placements be paid for, so. And then there's some additional stuff in there about charters and Metco, but all of that is basically all well and good until it gets to conference committee, which will take place sometime following the Senate's budget. Senate prepares, the Senate's budget will drop the second week of May. Budget week will be the last week in May, and then conference will go all the way through June or until they reach an agreement, and then the governor has 10 days to sign up. So that's that. Was there anything else? Oh, on the subject of solar, just so everybody knows, the legislature passed a solar net metering cap increase, which means that solar projects in the state can now continue. I know Hampden was working on a solar panel, a solar farm, so we might actually have an opportunity to move on that before we reach that cap again. And also, the Senate's taking up smokeless tobacco products this Thursday. We recently passed a policy on this board prohibiting the use of smokeless tobacco products and vaporizers on school campuses, so might get some backup on that, too, from, from and vaporizers on school campuses, so might get some backup on that, too, from, from the state.
Okay. Thank you. All right, moving ahead, Bernie, would you like to discuss the survey on homework guidelines?
Sure. I drafted a survey and shared it with the administrative team. You have in front of you the draft of what went through the administrative team, so I welcome any feedback that you may have on it. Do you want me to walk through it?
No.
I have a question. On the, when it asks, how familiar are you with the district's homework guideline? And then it goes right to how well are the district's homework guidelines being implemented for your child? Should we tell people what the homework guidelines are so that they can, like, I don't, I don't know, I'm trying to find a way so that people don't have to go and search through the 40-page handbooks to find the policy, to find the guidelines, because I don't know that, because they're going to fill out how familiar are you, you're going to say, not familiar, and then you can't really answer that question, how well are the district's homework guidelines being implemented for your child, unless you actually are familiar with the guidelines.
I'll, I'll talk to Nick. I don't know if you can link it and get back into it, because he's using Google Docs, he's not using Survey Monkey, but I don't know. I'll ask if he can place a link in there, but I'm not sure you can do that and then get back to the survey.
Or at least copy this, like, this section that says, this is how many minutes of, up to 45 minutes for a third grader, up to an hour for a fourth grader, which I think this is different than what our district ones.
Or could there just be a link on our website, the district website, you know?
There is a link right on the left-hand side of homework. Homework expectations, right.
Right, so maybe the link that Nick could put in is...
It's a Google Doc.
Is, to, he could connect it to that so that parents can see, because you're right, what's in the, the handbooks isn't necessarily the newest...
Yeah, I was just looking at the one in the elementary school, and it looks like it might be different.
Right, because that this way, it gives for all of, through, it gives it K through 12.
Yeah.
So, so you're asking that there be a link that, that will bring them to the homework expectations?
Something that shows them, so they can answer the questions, because I don't think, because if you...
Just on the timeline guidelines?
It's just plain easy to pop those right into the survey.
Probably, right.
It's a long document, though. It's, I don't think you should do that. It's a long document that's going to take you away from the survey.
It's nine, eight pages.
No, I didn't know what Kim was talking about, just the time, the timeframe, the timelines.
I think that might be helpful.
That's all. Not the whole document, no.
Right.
But once you get into middle school...
Not that it's not riveting.
Yeah, well, no, because I'm...
It's still going to be quite a chunk of information that's going to take your eye off the survey, and I think that will dissuade some people from filling out the survey.
I agree. I'm just trying to figure out how to, because, well...
Well, what if they had the survey, what if they had the homework first?
Maybe, maybe just putting after that question of how familiar are you with the district's guidelines, and then just maybe put a statement. If you are not familiar or have questions about the district's homework guidelines, they can be found at, and put a link right there. So if people want to go look at it, then they can go look and then answer the next question.
Because, because I don't think parents realize that a fifth grader is only supposed to have 50 minutes of homework, according to the district's policy. I don't, and I don't think they realize that a sixth grader is, like, our district expectations for middle school is one to one and a half hours of homework on a weeknight. I don't know what the middle schoolers are getting, but I know some of the fifth graders are getting more than that. So I know that, I don't think the parents know that their students shouldn't be getting more than that. And so I'm trying to find a way that parents can easily realize that, hey, my kid may be getting more or more homework than they're supposed to be getting, or they might be getting less. Or, what, I don't know, I'm just, I'm trying to find an easy way to have the information out there.
They get it at the beginning of the year, don't they?
It was sent out to all of them.
I mean, there does come a point...
The thing is that for this year, though, Michael, you know, and I agree with you, that at some point, parents need to take responsibility of, of finding this information, but since we just implemented it this year, it's not in the handbooks.
Okay.
It doesn't match, that doesn't match.
It doesn't match what's in all of the elementary or middle school or high school handbooks, so that's why I can see, too...
So you could, we could potentially put a link to the handbook at very first and say, if you are not familiar with the Long Meadow handbook, please familiarize yourself before you take, before starting the survey. And then the question could be, were, the policy, and then the first question can be, were you familiar with the policy before you reviewed it? Something, I don't know.
You could do something like that, too, sure.
Well, you don't even need, I mean, I don't know that it's relevant.
Yeah, after that, right.
Right, but just somehow, I see what Kim's saying...
I mean, Nick is going to be the expert on that.
We'll try a link, and see if we can link it, if you can go to the link and go backwards, and if not, we'll tell them where to find it. Russ?
So one of the questions is, have the guidelines brought consistency across grade levels to homework expectations? I think there's also, is it consistent within the grade level? Because that's kind of the biggest thing I've heard, is you'll have one classroom that's got a whole bunch of homework and another one that doesn't.
Well, that's what that question means, so how would you word for that?
Well, across grade levels, I would think would be, you're saying within the same grade level.
Right.
Okay.
You could just change across. So within...
Within the same grade level, yeah. I thought you meant vertically, but...
Right, because the consistent...
So how, how have the guidelines brought consistency within the same grade level to homework expectations?
Yeah.
So you're looking for all the third grades to have the same number of homework, same amount of homework? How do they know if they don't have...
Right, that's what I was going to say, is...
It's a little anecdotal.
From what you hear...
This is, the kids talk to each other, and then they tell their parents, and then it gets, but kids are, some of it is, the kids are different, it takes some different amounts of time to do the homework.
And there's like, how terribly that goes along with that, and I think that exists at sort of the parent level, too, to an extent. So I don't know if we can actually get an accurate read on what is the consistency within, like, third grades at center school, because it's anecdotal.
Well, I think what you do is you take the survey, and you see people that say it's a right amount for, for my kid, or they're following expectations, but it's not consistent with any grade. Well, if everybody else in the grade says it's okay for my kid, then, but I will say there is differences. I mean, some of the people that come to me, there's, well, even myself, my kids, it's not exactly what it's supposed to be. I'm not complaining because I, you know, it's okay for me, and the kids aren't complaining, but it's not really what the guidelines are, you know, you can't follow them exactly.
Right.
Every child is different. This is one of the toughest issues you take on, because every child handles, you have a perfectionist that won't stop at 50 minutes. You have another one that maybe doesn't want to work for the 50 minutes, so it's all very different, someone that rushes through. And the teachers will say that, it's just very hard to, this is, this is a guideline, because it's very hard to get it down to the exact number that we're putting on it, so.
So maybe, rather than, I mean, maybe we leave this question up as a little bit of like, of a sort of subjective question, and so we say, do you feel that the guidelines have brought consistency across, you know, within grade levels? Because it's impossible to say definitely, you know, one way or the other. I think that's more of a feeling question, and maybe we get to, how do we, how do we create the perception for parents that it is the same, or that it is relatively the same? I think we have to be kind of clear with ourselves that there's a level of academic freedom, we have to allow the teachers, and so if they want to assign something that the other teacher's not assigning, we can't get on them for that. You know, we can't take sort of the joy out of their work.
I think one of the things that might come out of this, though, is the question could be, let's say you get a survey back, and, and one question that's kind of missing is, I think in some respects, it's, is the right amount of homework for your child, but if we get the surveys back and it shows that consistently, you know, 85% of parents are saying, this is way too much homework for my kid, that's something we need to think about, too.
That's great, yeah.
Because it may be that the guidelines are too high, or too low, you know, who knows?
Could I ask, is there anything in the professional literature that indicates a proper amount of homework to reinforce lessons for the day?
Recent literature saying...
As opposed to just teacher whim? I mean, some teachers don't want to correct homework, so they don't assign it. And that's another good question. If you assign homework, do you check it?
The most recent, well, study I saw actually said that very minimal amount of homework is best.
Minimum amount is best?
Yes, the research, the most recent research is showing that minimal at elementary is ideal, but there's other research that says more is better, so you have, the research is all over the place. I think one of the, one of the issues that we looked at when we talked about this is that when they get to the high school, they have to have the study habits and habits of mind that they can do two hours of homework, especially if they're going into the advanced classes, they're doing more than two hours. So we worked backwards from the high school expectation, how do you build up that stamina? And that's how we looked at it and started with the high school ideal and worked backwards, because then you're looking at college, too, how much study time is expected in college. It's a lot more than that, so that was the premise that we took, that we developed these habits early on.
Especially when we get feedback from students who say that they either were or were not prepared for college.
Yeah.
And that's something we need to consider. I mean, it's one thing to take into consideration what we're doing at elementary, it's another thing to say that we're not doing what we should be doing at the high school. And, you know, I mean, this is not a one-size-fits-all approach, and, you know, this...
The middle school and the high school are pretty clear. I, I think the elementary is where the question is, is, as Marie just said, I mean, it's, does a second grader need, I mean, even my own second grader, sometimes she's doing homework for, you know, an hour and a half or something, and that's, is that really productive? Especially for some kids, I mean, some kids get really stressed by that. And so I think we just need to see what the surveys show, and then think about that in general.
What about sending out some guidance to teachers?
We have, the teachers were involved in this. This went through the faculty meeting several times.
But I mean, to standardize the message that's being sent out.
It has.
Well, like, for a second grader, I think probably 45 minutes would be more than enough just to get them used to the idea, setting aside some time to do some work. And then they go off and do whatever.
Well, that's what the expectations do, they, the expectations give specific minutes, 30 minutes of reading, and actually, the reading's built up, too. So they, that is a guideline for teachers and parents.
I used to tell my students in high school, you ought to be doing homework from seven to 10 every night. I don't know how many listen to me, but...
I know a lot of them are doing it very late hours, I hear. I know a lot of high schoolers are doing that and more.
Some of the elementary kids are, too, though.
Which is what we're trying to avoid. When they're young, they need their sleep, they need a lot more sleep, they need time to play and move, and, as the high school kids do, too, but, but part of this is trying to avoid that being locked down with so much homework.
I agree with that, with children, yeah, when they're young, but, you know, just get them used to the idea, the concept, so.
And plus, it's not like the high school students are getting home at three and then sitting there until 11 doing homework. They're going to sports, they're going to jobs, they're doing a lot of things, clubs, and then they're getting to the homework and sure. You know, there's definitely times where it's a lot, but, I mean, like...
Janet, can I ask a question?
Not the survey? No. I mean, this isn't open discussion.
I know. I just wanted to see if there's an ability to add reading as a question in the survey.
What I was going to ask is, with this question that we've been discussing, is, do we maybe, after this is the right amount for, is this the right amount for your child? We don't have anything in here that quantifies how much homework they're doing a night.
Right.
You know, is your child doing 15 to 30, 30 to 60, 60 to 10?
That would be too cumbersome for every grade, because every grade varies.
With the question that was asked, is it the right amount of homework for your child, and are they meeting the guidelines?
Maybe we can ask them to put that in, and that, please feel free to provide additional feedback. Maybe they can mention if they feel their child is doing too much homework. How much is it somehow?
I just said, is this the right amount of homework? But, but where I was leading with it is, if you're trying to pinpoint, is it consistent within the grade level? Because this, this question is confusing, at least to me, of, is, are these guidelines consistent within grade level?
Well, it's subjective.
It's subjective, but that is one of the talks, talk on the soccer field, that it's not consistent from classroom to classroom. Or building to building. So you can put that out there to see how widespread that is, but it is very subjective, because people don't, Michael.
So I've got, I got a little bit of feedback on these two questions. First, I do agree, I do agree with Janet that we probably should try to gauge, based on grade level, what, what parents, what students are actually doing each night, so is it maybe not 30 to 45 minutes, but is it one hour or less, two hours or less, you know? The other thing is, is this the right amount of homework for your child? Well, what is the value of asking that question if we can't, on our end, as the recipient of that information, quantify it? Because what is, the right amount from child A is definitely not the right amount for child B. And if we're getting parents who feel that it's too much for their child, and other parents feeling it's not enough, what does that tell us? It doesn't tell us anything. All it tells us is that parents have different ideas about what's important to them, and what, you know, they think is, is important to their child. So if that tells us that parents have a general sense about their homework, and this is their sentiment on it, great, but what, what sort of actionable information are we going to get out of that question? Because to me, you're going to have answers all over the spectrum, there's not going to be a middle ground, and what can we actually do? Because if you have, like, 30% of the parents who say that it's too much or way too much, and 30% who say it's not enough or way too little, that doesn't tell us how to challenge different kids or differentiate.
What's the goal of the survey?
Yeah, I guess that's my other question.
From, from your perspective, I think that, that would help.
I mean, I, the way I look at it is, I think the important questions are, do you know what the guidelines are? Are they being met with your kid? And if they are being met with your kid, is it the right amount for the child? And if we got, you know, 90% of parents saying the guidelines aren't being met, then we know we have guidelines, but they're not actually being followed, potentially.
Right.
We'd have to circle back to teachers and administrators and find out. And if we find out the guidelines are being met, but then we have 90% of parents saying they're being met, but it's way too much homework, or way too little, because I hear that, too. I hear there's not enough homework.
Right.
So I think that the idea of the survey is, let's just get an idea. Now, if it's 50/50 or something like that, doesn't tell you much. But if there's an outlier of 90% or 10%, then we know something might be going on.
But I agree, like, I, I agree with that piece of it, that we want to try to gauge whether people understand the, you know, the guidelines, there's a good sense that this is what my child should be getting, but when we get to these sort of very subjective questions about, is this right for my child, I don't know what that tells us as the people who are going to have to kind of decipher that information at the end of the day.
Are you looking for consistency throughout the grades, from school to school? Because I think if that's one of the questions, you can...
You can hone it down by saying my, your child is in grade, what, K1, 2, 3, 4, 5. My child does 30 minutes of homework, you know, or less, 40 or less, whatever. You know, there are ways to aggregate that data so that it gives us some more useful information. This is just an example, but if someone's at school X in, in sixth grade, and they're getting 90 minutes of homework, and at school Y, they're getting 30, I mean, those are good kind of indications.
Right.
But you're always going to have those fluctuations, too. There's some time when, yeah, someone might have an hour and a half of homework in, in the fifth grade on a Tuesday night, because they have a test on Wednesday, or their project, they didn't show their parents for the night before, you know? It's a really, it's very subjective, but, you know...
I mean, so, I mean, let's say that we get 300 responding, because it's like very generous, right? I mean, your margin of error on that is at least 5%, if not greater.
Michelle, hit something, and then Liz.
So I'll quickly just speak to the, the part about the question that Janet brought up. I, I agree with Janet and think that if we can find a way to measure the amount of homework that the grades are doing, you know, rather than having a subjective question, I think one question might be helpful to have that is in a range, 30 to an hour, if, if we want to measure how much homework they're doing. To Michael's point, I actually think that that question, do you think that this is too much homework for your child, you know, not enough? I think that's valid, because every parent, just like every teacher knows their children, every parent knows their child, and this is too much for one child, whereas another parent might feel that it is too little, but that tells us that, that tells us something. If we do have, find that 80% of the parents are saying this is way too much, which is more consistent with what I'm hearing, I'm, I'm hearing many people say that there's too much homework for their younger kids, and I'm not hearing a lot of people in the younger level that are saying that there's too little.
Right, I guess my question, Michelle, is, how is, how is that, you know, it's, it's fine to get a general sense of what parents are looking for, and I'm not suggesting that we don't ask them how they feel about it, but on, on our end of this, if we're going to get people who are all over the spectrum, which I imagine we will, especially as you especially as you break it down by grade, what is the value as the people who have to decipher the information? Like, what is the actionable next step?
Well, that's what I was saying, if we find that we have a high percentage that's saying it's too much or a high percentage of saying it's too little, then we can do something with that, or we can, you know, take it to teachers and ask them what they think.
But you're saying that if we have that with the numeric data, that it'd be both?
Well, I think it would benefit to have the numeric, you know, the data collection and...
Along with the subject.
Right, yes.
I'm sorry, Liz?
I'm gonna forget what I wanna say.
You better write it down.
Yeah, I was just about to. Okay, two things. I'm not really concerned about the amount of homework. Because I think that what we should focus on is, we, we find a guideline and we tell the administration that, for example, if a second grader has, needs to do thirty minutes of homework, they do their thirty minutes and then they stop. And so, if it takes them an hour to do their thirty-minute homework, they need to stop it in, at thirty minutes. The other thing that I think we should talk about, instead of hours or minutes of homework, is when the kids are assigned homework over breaks or projects over breaks that they need to meet with a group of students, that is so unfair. Vacation is for everybody.
Someone say that vacation shouldn't, there shouldn't be homework.
Right, well, that doesn't happen. So, I mean, maybe something in there about that, because I know it does.
Well, I see, that actually is in, like, I see in the elementary guidebook, but I didn't...
But it's not in for middle and high school.
Right, but it should, I mean, if we're gonna look at that, I, I agree.
What do you mean, the, the, over vacation?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, absolutely, for high school, it's not fair. People, not everybody sticks around during vacation.
I know, but it's in the elementary that teachers be mindful that we need vacation, but yet it's still, assignments still get...
Well, no, I, for example, like, if you have a project with somebody and you need to actually meet, I, I, I'm not saying I understand if you email back and forth or something like that. But then again, like, someone might go to China and they don't have access to internet. But if you need to do presentations where you need to dress up and make a video.
Mm-hmm.
I've heard of that happening, yeah.
So what question would you like asked?
Yeah, I don't know.
Something about, you know, has your child had homework projects, whatever, group proj...
Assigned over, over break.
Yes or no, you know, just, Russ, you, you had something?
I was just gonna piggyback on your idea that if we put in the timeframes, we should just use the same timeframes in the guidelines. And then we can cross-reference when somebody says it, they're not following the guidelines. But then if they say, well, they do an hour and a half, if that's within the guideline, then we should be able to cross-reference the two to make sure it actually isn't. And then maybe if it isn't, maybe it's just too much homework, you know, that's a different question.
So, does the question work? How much time does your child spend on average on homework? No homework, thirty minutes, forty-five minutes, sixty minutes, grading sixty minutes?
We can play with the, with the quantities, but what I, I think, if we're gonna ask a question, I'm going back to the, what I, the point I was trying to make. If we're gonna ask this question about, is this the right amount of homework for you? What we should do is, we should say, how many, how many minutes on average does your child spend per night? Hour or less, two hours or less, three hours or less? And then ask this question about, do you feel like this is...
That's what we've been saying. Are you in a time warp?
Yeah.
I didn't get that.
We did, yeah.
That's where, that's where...
No, but I think, from an order perspective, it makes more sense to do it, I'm not, yeah, okay.
I think that's what we were thinking.
Should we be clear to let them know we're actually talking about homework versus reading? Because I think we've, are we separating the amount of time they should be doing homework versus reading? Because I know that in here, it's like fifty minutes of homework plus twenty minutes of independent reading.
Not counting hu, not counting reading?
But I think, and just looking at it from an, an older kid's perspective, in middle school and high school, in that document, it doesn't say anything about projects and homework over breaks.
Right.
But I can tell you, my high schoolers had homework over spring break.
The high school teachers believed they should. That came out of the faculty meetings, they felt very strongly that that was their prerogative to give it during vacations.
Okay.
And you do get homework over spring break and...
Well, what about the projects, though? How can you expect people to meet if they're going on vacation?
Right.
That's, I guess, a better point, is that, like, you can't assign a group project to be due upon the return from vacation if it requires collaboration without allowing enough runway. And if the kids aren't, at a certain point, we have to, at least in high school, say that there's a certain level of, you know, personal responsibility that needs to go along with homework assignments, right? And so, if they're saying, over break, you have one week to complete an assignment where you need to film a project, that's not realistic. But if you say, here's a three-week span in which you need to get this thing done, or two weeks, and that includes one week of vacation, well, there's two weeks in there where you can plan time with your partner. And so, I think that we just have to be clear, like, if we're gonna, if we're gonna say something to a high school teacher about how they're assigning something over break, shouldn't limit what they wanna do, but we should also say that you have to be a little bit more reasonable in how, you know, in like, like, let's live in reality for a moment and say that kids are gonna go on vacation, they can't be expected to collaborate with a partner while they're not in the same state.
Those are for collaborative projects.
Right.
But individual projects, I used to give quarter-length assignments.
But so that's...
And they were expected to do it over, whenever they could.
Right, but that's gonna, with you saying that tonight, that the high school teachers in their meeting felt their prerogative, high school students should have that, that's gonna skew, I mean, so you're gonna get people who fill out, their kids are at LHS and what grade level, and then if you put in a question about breaks, they're automatically gonna check it, saying, yes, they have stuff over breaks, but yet that's expected and was agreed upon with the teachers in collaboration of this document. And then that gives a false sense to the parents, perhaps, of saying, oh, well, yeah, they really shouldn't have it over break. You, you know what I'm saying, is, back to, to your point...
I know, but I disagree with having any homework over break. Because it's not fair that the, if teachers have a, a break, why shouldn't students?
So, we could put that in, do you believe children, students should have assignments over vacation? You could bring that information back to the faculty for their assessment without dictating what they do. You could just say, ninety-eight percent of parents believe they shouldn't be getting projects over vacation.
That's a fair...
I'm sorry, you go to school for a hundred and eighty days, not including vacation.
You should be able to take a five-days...
Break.
Break, three times a year.
So that's at least, you know, quantitative in terms of being able to bring back data to the, the faculty?
Are we talking just projects? Are you talking assignments? What are you talking about?
Well, I would say everything, but I don't know if that's pushing it.
I would at least specify group projects.
Let's call it homework and projects over vacation.
Okay.
And then, does that include reading or not? Because you have, then you get into the area of summer reading.
Well, no, kids are reading.
Oh, reading novels over vacation on the beach.
It's nice.
Kids are reading.
I think the parents at Long Meadow are making sure that kids are reading, so we wouldn't be just finding it. I guess, in, in an effort to keep this smaller or shorter, does it really matter what school the students go to? We're gonna have them indicate their grade levels.
It matters very much.
Why?
Because then it could be very different opinions at schools, and I think we as a group need to see that. Do we have stronger opinions at some? Do you have one school that, that feels like they should do no homework and another school that believes they should do fifteen minutes? Because that came up with the faculties. We had, we had to go through several iterations because there were such different opinions at schools.
And the grade levels go all the way to twelve, I assume, we only have the four.
Well, it's on the next page, but I guess, if we're looking at percentages of parents and if, you know, eighty-five percent of parents feel that their children are getting too much homework, does it really matter where they're at?
We'll aggregate the data as well as disaggregate it, so that we know what's going on at Williams and what's going on at both middle schools.
You know, but I think in terms of that consistency within grade levels, what, through both building and district, that's the only way that we're gonna be able to disaggregate. So, are you at Wolf Swamp with a third grader, or Blueberry with a third grader, or Center with a third grader? If all across the board, they're saying, this is how much my child spends on homework, and they're all dead on, you know that we've brought consistency. But if you have one school that is way too much and saying two hours plus, and the other two schools are saying, okay, or too much, but they're spending an hour, that way you can tell where the, the hotspots are.
But then that would also come into play if there are only three parents from one school fill out the survey and two out of the three feel that this is too much homework for their child, then you're gonna get a skewed percentile.
Right, but we would have that data too.
I can tell you, in fifth grade, one school's going to report that there's not enough homework. One's going to report there's way too much, and one's going to be okay.
Do you think the timeframes are gonna be the same?
If you didn't disaggregate the data, then you would get back that the homework's okay in fifth grade. Because they're going to balance each other out. So you're gonna have to be able to say, oh, this one school, wow, look at that, they, they, they're reporting not enough and this one's reporting way too much. Because the balance could come out that it, they, they...
Cancel each other out.
Cancel each other out.
But if we're, if we're figuring out that there's thirty to forty-five minutes, you know, if you have that question to figure out the amount of time that they're spending, you would have that information in their answers. Does it really matter that the child is at Center or Blueberry?
I think it is.
The teacher gives way too much homework and not listening to the homework guidelines?
Well, I guess, I would, what is the point of this? Is it to check that the homework guidelines are being followed? I thought the point was just to just decide, you know, to hear from the parents whether or not they feel that their children are getting too much homework.
I think it's both.
I wanna know if they're being followed.
Because it's almost like two different, it could be two different surveys. And if we care about checking on the schools to make sure that they're following the homework guidelines, that's one goal. If we care about and the, you know, because that's almost like something from you, Marie, if you wanna see that. I thought our, our goal was to figure out if the homework guidelines were good for the kids or if how they were affecting the children. So, that's the goal, which...
When are we looking to put this out?
The next couple of weeks.
So, I think, I think it needs a little bit more work. And what I would like to do is, and I'm happy to volunteer to be this person, but I'd like to work with you, if possible, to kind of retool a little bit and bring back a sort of a more fleshed-out version that tries to get at what everybody's thinking about. So, if, if everybody's amenable, I'm happy to sit down with Marie and whoever else was involved and come up with sort of a...
Well, can we at least establish what the goal is?
Yeah, I'm sure it is.
Well, can the people?
I would offer that from...
I can't be both. I'm a little bit just thrown by, if you know that there's three different outcomes already from three different elementary schools, like, we should, we should be making that adjustment now, not waiting for a survey.
We've had those conversations with the principals, the principals have had them with teachers. That's one of the reasons that I worked on this homework expectation, because the conversations weren't enough, that here's the guideline, this is what you need to do, and that sequentially you could see. It went through several faculty meetings so that we could bring this to their attention. They've had discussions several times around it. You still have differences, but I think they're beginning to tweak it. But I think that the parent feedback will also, you can go back to them in the school and say, this is what people are reporting.
To answer Michelle's question, I think that the survey should do the two things it's, it's attempting to do. Was to gauge parents' familiarity with the pol, or with the guidelines. And then establish some idea about sentiment towards whether those guidelines are appropriate or whether they're being followed at each school, or whether parents feel strongly about one way or another. And I think a survey can include all of those things, and you can break it into sections. And in section one, it's gonna say, like, I'm gonna ask you, well, here's a few questions about the, the guidelines. And section number two can be, here's some questions about how you feel about those guidelines. And then we can figure out a couple other sort of indicators.
What about attaching the guidelines to the survey?
Yeah, and I think that's...
So, when you ask them, are you familiar with it? They'll all have to answer yes.
Right, but, but at least this is...
Well, I guess they could say no, even though they're looking at it.
Right, but, but this gives more concrete data, I think, for Marie to have those discussions with both principals and teachers of saying, okay, it's not just anecdotal, here's what, you know, we've surveyed parents. If, if we compare your school to another school, here's what's being said. You know, yes, you take some of it with a grain of salt, but it gives comparative data to at least support the discussions, rather than keep going back and having the discussions with no results.
Yeah, I mean, and then we can get into the weeds on some things, like, for instance, select your child's school. Well, are we gonna make people take two surveys if they've got kids at two different schools?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
They have to take one survey for every kid, I think.
Mm-hmm, and I think we said that. Yes.
Parents with multiple students, please compete, complete as many times.
And you couldn't, you couldn't just choose, like, select as many as apply?
No, because it's gonna, you're gonna have different answers for each one.
Right, okay.
So, will you work on this and have a revised draft for the next meeting?
Yes. Let's get those kind of...
Michelle?
I just wanna add one comment. I guess if, I'm uncomfortable as a parent having a survey that's given to me that seems like it's kind of analyzing whether or not the teachers are following the homework guidelines. I, I think that's something that maybe the parents don't, might not wanna be involved in. I, I don't, I know that they're not mentioning anybody specifically by name, but, you know, I think, Marie, that's more of an administrative thing for you. And I think the parents would be better off providing feedback as to whether or not they feel the homework that their child is take, you know, doing is appropriate for them. But in terms of taking this to analyze whether or not the homework guidelines are being followed, I think that's asking parents to report on something that really isn't maybe something they wanna get involved in. That's, that's my feeling. I, I don't, I don't really wanna...
Isn't there a parent component of the educator evaluation now?
I believe so. If this isn't really reporting on teachers, I think we're going to find out that, that we need to know whether there's great variance in how much homework they're doing. I think the other thing is really the individual child and how much, how mu, how much time they spend, because it, it's different. I think we're going to find out that this is all over the place and that it, it always will be. And what we did is we attempted to say, try and give this much, but it's impossible to come up with thirty minutes of homework or forty-five minutes of homework. It's just a guideline. And I think the other thing was so that teachers could look this, look at this on the whole spectrum, that a kindergarten teacher should be giving a little bit, whereas by the time they get to high school, you have to build up that stamina for two hours. I, I, I'm not looking upon this that we're trying to identify teachers or say, or say that there's a problem with what they're doing. It's just raising awareness every time they get more feedback on this. The more you talk about something, the more you're educated about it, the more you think about your practice. And I, I, I don't want teachers identified, we've said that on the survey. Where, where anything that, that is school-wise, we can give it to the school individually, that doesn't have to be discussed publicly. We can come back and say, as a district, this is what the feedback was. But if I can get this and get it to a principal and say, listen, the parents who keep coming to me about, you know, fifth grade homework, this verifies what's been said, it's just not one or two parents coming to you with a concern. It's, it's verified now through a survey.
But it couldn't be used for individual teachers. I mean, the most you're ever gonna do with something like this would be, go to the principal and say, listen, you know, this grade is probably a little too high, or this grade's a little too low, or whatever it is.
And the only time we would get specific educator feedback, I guess, would be in the, do you have additional comment section?
But even there, it says do not identify.
We ask not to identify individual teachers to staff.
Right, and if we do get that person in there, we can just disqualify that comment and say, okay, well...
Knock the name out.
Yeah.
Right.
Right.
This really is not about gotcha, it's about, again, how are we doing?
Awareness.
It's a prac, it's just feedback on our practice.
Do we mention in our guidelines what, what the goal of assigning homework is in elementary school versus middle school or high school?
I think we talk about should be meaningful.
Like, it's...
I mean, I have a philosophical conversation or discussion about homework that's a different thing than what we're talking about tonight, although we've gotten off, we've gone down that road. And if you wanna think about that and developing a philosophy that the school and the school committee can embrace and adopt, that's a huge undertaking and a different story. And so, you know...
And the fact that the homework guidelines took a year and a half to get to that discussion is...
Right, and a survey like this can, can have you, or allow you to kind of start those discussions. Look at, over here, you're doing a half an hour of homework a night, and, you know, you, you, your kids are scoring off the charts. And here, you're doing an hour and a half, and yet you're, so there are, it's, it's not about being punitive, it's about like, being, having a discussion about it and what does homework really mean to people and students and, more importantly, parents, you know, who are having that homework battle at home. I think it's a, it's a bigger thing than just, you know, are you comfortable with the amount of homework? So, that's not for this year, and certainly not for Marie. So, shat enough on her plate, pretty much.
Have the teachers been surveyed on this?
They've had many discussions at faculty meetings.
Well, I mean, on, no, on the...
The amount they're giving.
On the guidelines. Now, the guidelines came into being, I don't know how, but they came into being. Have we now done a survey to ask teachers, what do you think of this?
That's a good question.
It went to faculty meetings for discussion.
You did?
Where we finally had consensus with all the faculties.
But it was done in public as opposed to sitting down and writing a personal...
We had several iterations of it. With the several iterations, we kept making changes based on their feedback. I had feedback from lots and lots of teachers that came to me directly, as well as faculty meetings.
So you think we're ready to go and ask the parents now?
I think we are ready. It took two years to get consensus with the...
How are you gonna get it home to the parents?
Through the school messenger.
Because what if the students get their hands on it?
No.
They're too busy doing homework?
This could be like a stepping stone for the bigger question. Like, we're taking the survey, evaluating, maybe the, the goal of the assigning homework. Because we've talked a little bit about that on this board as well. because we've talked a little bit about that on this board as well.
And I, I don't know if this is appropriate and, you know, maybe Marie and I can discuss it and bring it back, but do we want to put additional qualifiers in? For instance, does your child have a 504 IEP? Is that helpful in helping us understand what special, like, parents of special education students think about?
I think the question is, you know, is the amount of homework appropriate for your student? If that's a yes or no, then they're, like Michelle said, you know your kid, you know?
I think I would go on the additional feedback question too, if they wanted to put them in.
And you can make it, I guess, I mean, you make it optional.
I mean, hopefully, we're accommodating those kids before we're sending home two hours worth of homework.
And we also don't want to make a survey that's so long that it turns people off.
Right, exactly.
You know, you want people to be able to fill it out.
Oh, sorry.
Michelle?
Oh, that's okay. I just, I was going to share that I think in doing this study, I do think it would be helpful to survey the teachers and, and see how they feel now that it's been going on and, and what they're sensing from their students, because it's kind of the same thing as a parent. You know, they know their students, let's hear from them in survey format, how they think it's affecting the kids and whether or not they think that it's the right amount of time now that, you know, it's being piloted or tested or whatever. Let's, let's just...
That's, I was going to say basically the same thing, but I think maybe we do this survey and then we get the results and then we do a teacher survey to figure out how theirs match up. But probably not at the same time, because we might want to do a little bit different survey with the teachers after we get the feedback from the students. But I completely agree with that, because I think...
I guess let's just make it part of the project since we're going to look into it.
Can't we just take the questions and do the same questions? Just adjust them from the teachers, what you point, you get the same survey at the same time?
Well, I mean, the questions have to be different.
Please select your school, your grade level.
We'll, we'll come back to you all with...
Yeah, it, it, I guess while you're working on this parent survey, consider doing...
Yeah, I mean, what Marie, I agree with what Marie's saying. We can, we can augment certain questions that are specific to children and feel that you're providing your students with enough, you know, things like that.
So you'll bring all of that back to us through...
Keep in mind, they've been getting a lot of surveys, so...
Parents or teachers?
So...
Just part of the, the trend of just more and more asks of them.
You're looking for good answers, meaningful answers. Keep, be mindful of what you're piling on them.
Yeah.
Okay, so, May 9th?
May 9th, we will put it on the agenda.
All right, Sue, it's you.
Do it during their, when they get their brownie.
It's brownie, now take a survey.
Update on park component of MCAS.
Okay, so I think you're just looking for some additional information on what the story is with park-like questions that are being included with the MCAS for all students. So Long Meadow, as you know, decided to stick with the MCAS for this year. And in grades three through seven, the state decided that they would add some park-like questions in both ELA and math. So ELA is over. There was a section 2B, what was all, all the park-like questions. There was a 60-minute time allowance for students to take that, except for students who had special circumstances. And they were required to read a liter, a literary passage and answer four evidence-based selected response questions, which is really what the kind of the park-like questions are going to. You know, read this passage, answer your questions, point to the place in the passage or that you found the information. Or how are you, you know, how are you justifying your answer? How are you defending your answer? So they're, they're, we're moving towards that with the park, with the MCAS 2.0. And so that's kind of what these were. There was, there were four questions like that. And then there was one narrative writing response for ELA. And the narrative responses scored on a rubric. And those are all available online. And the ELA scores for the park-like questions will be reported, from what I can understand, but they're not counted in the MCAS score. So you'll hopefully get feedback on them.
Parents will?
Parents will and school will, but they're not included in the overall MCAS score.
Will the parents get the questions?
I don't, I don't know if they will. There's a whole bunch of sample questions online now, but I don't know if they'll get the actual and I don't know if every student got the same park-like question. You know how MCAS questions are mixed up? So, might be different. So math is coming up. I think elementary math is the 10th through the 18th and then middle school is the 9th and the 10th for math. And the park-like math questions are actually included in the MCAS session. It's not a separate session. They're not pulled out, they're not separate. So your kids are going to take MCAS and within that MCAS, they'll have some park-like questions too. Park has three types of questions. They call them type one, type two, and type three. They deal with conceptual understanding and fluency and application. Type one, type two is mathematical reasoning. And then type three is like real-life kind of questions for, for students. There are six total items for grades three through seven in math. And again, they'll pull the park scores out. They won't include those in the overall MCAS scores. And I'm hoping that they report to us and parents on those, but they won't be counted towards anything, so.
Any questions for Sue?
So I, so I think part of, I mean, we should probably do this before the math component, but I think part of the confusion of parents and kids was that they didn't know that upfront. And so kids and their parents were confused about, well, what is that?
Yeah, are they taking park?
Kids were coming home saying, I'm taking park.
Taking park, yep.
And then, which essentially they are, you know, at least to some extent.
A portion of it, yeah.
So I think we need to probably do a little PR campaign as far as what's telling parents exactly what's going to happen so that their kids know, because it became an issue. I mean, even my own kids came home asking about it.
We had several students and parents opt out of the park section on, on this last ELA. If they opt out for math, they're opting out of MCAS and they'll get, you know, they'll score zero for the whole thing because they're interspersed, they're not two separate sessions, so. So we can send something out from here.
We should probably be clear about that too.
Be very clear about that piece of it too.
So I think that was really what...
I think principals did send things home from school, but maybe they weren't clear enough.
It was confusing though, Russ. The state originally said you could choose between the MCAS and park. Then they came back and they said they were going to add some park questions. They did not say they were adding a park section. So as the test came in, that was a surprise to us as well. We thought that they were putting some park questions embedded in the test that you wouldn't even be able to tell what was what. But then there was a whole section. So I, I see where the parents were concerned about that. We were too, because we hadn't been informed what they were doing, other than adding a few questions, is what we were told.
Yeah, I think some of the messages were unclear too at the time. It did, so it just wasn't a consistent message, I think, even between buildings and that type of thing, so. But this one is...
It was, I mean, it was all over the place. We were seeing all kinds of stuff, so...
Everywhere, people were...
Yeah, totally understand.
And part of it is, if you don't take it at all, like on the math section, the issue is your Level 1 ratings and everything else. Even though they say it doesn't count, it does count if they're going to drop your level, because not enough kids take it.
At any rate.
So there's, you know, you can't say both of those things. At the state level, they keep telling us that, but you can't.
You can't, if you opt out, it will count, so as a zero.
If a student third through seven opts out of the math part of the park, what happens?
They opt out. You can't opt out of just park for math, because there, it's the same session. It's not a separate session.
So the school will be penalized or the district will be penalized?
Well, if you want to call it penalized, I mean, you know, yeah, right.
So that's why when the state...
But you cannot legally opt out of the MCAS.
Right, you cannot.
You can't do that. So I think parents need to know that they have embedded park questions. You do not have a right to opt out of this, because it's, it's law that you can't opt out of the MCAS and that if a student refused to take the test, it would impact the level of the school.
I mean, well, they could opt out. It's just that they will get a zero. I mean, it's, I mean...
The commissioner put out a letter that said students may not opt out of the MCAS.
But he also says in the letter, but if you do, then give them some other alternative. So it's... I mean, the issue is, I, I think the issue is really the state level, not our level.
Right.
But the issue becomes, the state keeps saying, well, you're not penalized. We don't really count this, blah, 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 but they do.
Right.
Right.
Because they affect your level if you don't take it on the math side.
Especially in the math, yeah.
So, you know...
And it's, again, nobody is focusing on the fact that it's the questions that are troublesome. It's, it's, they're looking at the park and they look at the technology and all that. It's troublesome that they have questions that are inappropriate for the grade levels. And I think, you know, some of us have sent that message into the DESE and we've reported that, but I still don't hear them examining the questions and seeing what they can do to improve the quality of what they're asking students to do.
Well, sadly, it's the math too that's, some of the most problematic questions are the math questions.
So that's coming up.
So that's really the...
Hopefully, they'll use the information they get to take a better look at that. And I did see today that they're getting groups together to develop the questions for next year's test, so I think...
When, when we did the test two years ago, our third graders, certain grades did them, was it just ELL or was it math as well?
Oh, the park, when they did the park paper test? High, high school did it for sure.
Third grade, some.
And then, was it Woolswamp?
It was mixed.
Woolswamp and...
Certain schools were chosen.
Yeah.
I know my blueberry third grade did it.
Did a paper.
Right, and I can tell, I mean, I can tell you that my fifth grader this year, everyone's, you know, park was the big topic. I want to do it, don't want to do it. My, my fifth grader, who is, stresses about everything, took the sample in third grade, went into fifth grade saying, I took it in third grade.
Yeah.
It's no big deal.
So we give our kids about it as well, you know?
Because he had, I feel, I mean, I didn't love that he was taking it in third grade, but he took it in third grade, he was familiar with it, and he wasn't afraid of it in fifth grade. And I feel like that kind of helped him this year. I'm not advocating for...
One way or the other.
All of this, but I'm just saying that if there's some familiarity, if they've taken something that's called park, even if it may not be...
Yeah.
The right question.
We'll see next year. But of course, it won't be called park next year, it'll be MCAS 2.0.
Right, so I feel, maybe we're calling it the wrong thing. Maybe the state should be calling it a sample of MCAS 2.0 and even if it's got different questions, but I just feel...
That would have been much better received if they called it something different instead of calling them park questions.
Yeah, like by children having a familiarity with it, saying, I've done this already.
Yeah, would make parents feel better too.
It's tone deaf to a certain issue.
All right, so any other questions for Sue?
Good luck.
All right. Marie's evaluation is set for May 23rd. And I know last year, people had said that they didn't have enough time with just two weeks. So Diane has emailed you all the evaluation that I put together, which is Desi's evaluation. But based on feedback that I got from the committee last year, I have made it into a Word doc so that you can fill it in. You know, you don't have to print it and, and then handwrite it all in. You can fill it in on the computer. It's got the goals already in there. The first section is the whole process of the evaluation. Thank you for pulling this up, from Desi.
Keep going down.
I didn't, Diane wasn't in today, which I didn't know, and plus it's 52 pages, because I've embedded everything into one document. If you can scroll down for me for just a second. So it's got all of the guidelines that Desi has.
What page do you want me to go down to?
Like 20, I think.
Oh.
So, like on page 12, it starts with the form, gives the directions for how to do it. But as you scroll down, the next two pages are going to be the educational, the practice goals, the, hold on for a second, I'm sorry. The professional goals, the student learning goals, and the community goals, district improvement goals. So those are all typed in. And then the four sections, which are the standards. Standard one of instructional leadership, it's the form. And then following that, I embedded the rubrics that go with them instead of being in a separate packet. That's why the document is so long. So it's following the form and the rubric to answer the questions for the standards and then the comments for each. So with this being scheduled for May 23rd, I would ask, I've just got to look at a calendar. I would ask that they be submitted to me by Wednesday, May 18th so that I have time to compile them and create one document for the night of the 23rd.
And when you compile them, do you just, I mean, how does that look? Do you just have an average score and then the comments below it? Or how do, how are you putting it together?
What I did last year was, so for the sections where, you know, there are the four rankings of pro, what are they?
Exemplary proficient.
Exemplary proficient, meets or needs improvement. I just rank it 1, 2, 3, 4, you know, add them up and give an average for those. And then the comments are all put together with the person's name with the comments.
Okay.
And so then that one document is shared with school committee and then presented to Marie that evening to have the discussion in open session as required.
Okay.
All right, so it's all been sent to you in Word doc. If you don't mind to email it back to me in Word doc, that would be most helpful. And if you've got any questions while pulling it up or doing it, just don't hesitate to ask.
You know, the one, so the one thing I'll mention is that the DESE actually recommends that the chair not be the one to compile. Not that you can't, but their recommendation is that somebody else does it.
No, it says in the document that the chair or a representative is what the document says from Desi.
No, they say that the chair, oh, it's AG's office, actually. The Attorney General's office says it probably shouldn't be the chair. That's for open meeting law issues, but, so you're right, it's not Desi, it's the Attorney General's office.
I've not seen anything from the AG's office.
I mean, I personally don't really care one way or the other. I'm just telling you that from an open meeting law point of view, the recommendation is that chair doesn't do it.
How is it a violation of open meeting law?
It's not a violation. It's that they recommend you not do it, so that there's no question about an open meeting law violation. So usually, they recommend, like Diane would do it, but...
But I will tell you, I don't feel comfortable with Diane doing it. I don't think, and no disrespect to you, it's, I don't feel it's appropriate for Diane to collect and aggregate information on her superior and on her boss.
I'm just telling you what the advisory says.
If we had a secretary that was not the, we had a school committee secretary who was not the superintendent's administrative assistant, I would feel differently. But because, I, I, I just don't feel that that's an appropriate relationship.
It's up to you. I'm just telling you what the advisory says. I mean, it's whatever you want.
Again, I'm going by what Desi says. I, I don't see how it's a conflict.
I'm not saying it is. I'm just telling you what the advisory says. I mean, it's up to you as chair, what you want to do, but...
Anybody else want to take it on?
It can't be one of us, it would have...
If anybody else would like to take on compiling the data and...
It can't be a committee member. I'm just, all I'm trying to do is give you some friendly advice. That was it. It's, I wasn't meant to be an argument. I was just saying that there's an advisory that says the chair probably shouldn't do it.
You're saying me as chair. You didn't say anybody on the committee.
Yeah, but it'd be the same idea. It's because it's an open meeting law. It's a question of, the idea is you're supposed to give it to somebody neutral that's not on the committee to compile it, and the compilation is just a mathematical, put it together, type it up, and it's done. I'm not saying you can't do it, I'm just telling you what the advisory says, that's all it is.
Okay, and, and again, I'll respectfully say I'm going by what Desi has given for school committees.
I can see that.
Well, I would like to add that I'm not comfortable if this is a potential open meeting law situation. Then why would we do that this year after we just went through what we did?
I would like to see documentation from the AG's office that states that, rather than hearsay from a member.
It's on their website, but.
All right, can we just have a point of order?
It's not a-
I feel like, I appreciate what Russell's saying, I appreciate what you're saying. Can we move the agenda along?
I'm happy to, but I don't believe that the issue is resolved.
Can we look it up somehow, because we don't wanna, I, I wanna be-
It's not a violation, it's just a recommendation. It's in their advisory that they say, I think it's in the open meeting law, the, the guide of the Attorney General, and right in that guide, it says that they recommend it not be the chair.
For superintendent evaluations?
For superintendent evals, and usually, it would be the school committee secretary, which often is also the superintendent secretary. But that's, it's either in their guide or one of their advisories, but I think they actually has one specifically on superintendent.
Well, is there any way we can evaluate whoever puts the-
I mean, we don't have to decide this right now. I was just trying to give you-
The collection of information together, we can evaluate whether it was done properly?
Yeah, and I wasn't saying that. It was just, I don't think Janet's gonna do it inappropriately. I think it's just, I was just trying to provide information, because I've seen that come up with other places. I mean, it's. Let me look, okay. Do you still have the guide up?
Well, who's gonna do it?
Let's look it up. They're looking it up.
I think to-
Michelle?
To John's point, if, if there's a concern about anything, last year, you know, we all had, we kept our own copies, so we had a record of what happened, and so we could make sure that all of our scores were entered in appropriately, if that's the conflict with having somebody outside the committee doing it, like, you know, Diane. So we all have our scores and our own evaluations. If we feel that we weren't represented in that, we can always cross-check it.
And I'm not saying that I, I feel Diane won't do that. I don't feel that it's appropriate for Diane to have access and read all of the comments that we individually make about her boss prior to Marie having it or any of us having it collectively. That would just be like anybody, you know, that's putting Diane in an awkward position.
What was the situation last year? Did Diane do the compi-
No, I compiled everything last year.
Some places still do that. I, I think MFC Conference, they were talking about having the chair do it. I just know there's an AG, AG opinion that says something different. I don't know if I can find it this second.
All right, well, we don't need to decide this tonight.
Shall I make a motion that let the chair do it?
Let's, let's look, let's table this part of the discussion, maybe, and let Russ come to us maybe next meeting with the information, so we can make a decision.
Sure.
Well, I-
Table, Miss.
We could ask Liz.
Here it is here. Yes, members of a public body may individually create evaluations and then submit them to an individual to aggregate into a master evaluation document to be discussed in an open meeting. Ideally, members of the public body should submit their evaluations for compilation to someone who is not a member of the public body, for an example, an administrative assistant. If this is not a practical option, then the chair or other designated public body member may compile the evaluations. However, once the individual evaluations submitted, are submitted for aggregation, there should be no deliberation among members of the public body regarding the content of the evaluations outside of an open meeting, whether in person or over email.
Is that in the Attorney General's thing?
Yep.
Sounds a non-committal.
Right.
It's a recommendation, like I said.
So it's saying Janet cannot be discussing this with anyone unless it's at a public meeting.
Yeah, the whole point is if you give it to somebody that's not on the committee, there's no way that we just start talking and changed our vote or our decisions. And I'm not saying that would happen, but that's why the AG recommends that we don't do it. You know, it is what it is, and we could talk about it next meeting. I mean, it's not a-
Whatever you all wanna do. I'm more than happy to give it up. I'm just stating my personal opinion is that I don't feel it's appropriate for someone who works for Marie, who is subjected to Marie's evaluation, Marie's evaluation of her, to be put in that position.
Isn't the whole question moved in that the superintendent's term is coming to an end on the 30th of June?
Isn't it also moved that she's evaluated in public?
I'm just saying, that's my personal opinion. If the committee so wishes Diane to do it, that's fine. I'm stating my personal opinion.
I, I don't have an opinion.
I really don't have an opinion one way or the other. I was just trying to give you, I knew that was out there as something the AG had said, so.
In the interest of getting something done here, I, I move we give the job to Diane. Want your second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? All those abstaining? So that's a three?
Three, one.
Three to two? No, three, two, two. So it-
You wanna talk about it?
Two, two, it's one.
It, right. So everything is being given to you. What date would you like it by in order to have everything compiled and to us for our packets prior to the 23rd? The 18th? Okay. We have the nurses' contract. The nurses did vote and ratified their MOA between the LEA and the school committee dated March 23rd, during their meeting on April 11th, 2016. Can I have a motion?
I move on the recommendation of the negotiating subcommittee that the school committee approve the memorandum of agreement dated March 23rd, 2016, with the Long Meadow Education Association Nurses Unit C, also known as Unit C, or unit, also known as Unit C.
Do I have a second? Any further discussion?
There'll be a final contract prepared, as we discussed before, right?
Once this is voted on, yes. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay.
Welcome back.
Liz, do you have the warrants?
Yep. I move that the school committee approve the warrant batch number 2200 of the school lunch FY16 fund dated April 29th, 2016, in the amount of $79,019.91.
Okay.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
I move that the school committee approve the warrant batch number 3157 of the general fund FY16, dated April 29th, 2016, in the amount of $510,379.24.
Okay.
Motion in a second. All those in favor? All right, the minutes?
Sorry.
Oh, you're good.
No matter. I move that the school committee approve the minutes that March 28th, 2016, school committee meeting is presented.
Second.
Any discussion?
These are the ones that we edited.
Michelle?
I just wanna add one thing to the portion where, on the second page, the very first paragraph, Ms. Grodsky felt better about the procedure once Mr. Dunkerly explained the process. Can we add that I asked that the lunch threshold be reviewed and possibly increased by a few meals?
Any other changes?
As amended.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
I move that the school committee approve minutes to the April 11th school committee meeting as presented.
Second.
Motion in a second and discussion?
I have a question. We also had an executive session. I have a question about the executive session.
Okay, those minutes will be approved in executive session.
Fine, okay, thank you.
Any other discussion?
I'm gonna abstain because I was asked.
Okay, so, calling for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed, abstaining. All right. Can I have a motion for executive session, please?
I move that the school committee adjourn into executive session to comply or act under the authority of general or special law, i.e. general law, Chapter 30A, Section 22G, consideration of release of executive session minutes from previous meetings, and to discuss strategy as it relates to possible litigation, not to reconvene into open session. This motion requires a roll call vote.
Aye.
Wait, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Liz, aye. John?
John Fitzgerald, aye.
Michael Clark, aye.
Janet Robinson, aye. Kim King, aye.
All right, thank you very much. We will be back here on Monday, May the 9th.